Okay, today is January 25th, 2023, 27th, I'm sorry, January 27th, 2023. Welcome to the Town of Woodfin Board of Adjustment Special Meeting. We're going to call to order the resumption of the administrative appeal of Jessica and Alex Bernstein and the citizens of their responsible land use from the termination of Shannon Tuck, interim planning director, contained in the letter dated September 30th, 2022, concerning the Robin Hood Road development. I would like to take roll call and certify the quorum. Ms. Gosnell?
Here.
Michael Bennett here, Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
And Mr. Deroni?
Here.
That being said, we have a quorum.
Correct. Yep, I just want to remind the board again, when you're listening and determining the facts of this case, that you have to be fair and impartial. Give each side the process that is due, allow them to fully present the evidence and the facts of their case, and not, you all are not allowed to have a fixed opinion prior to the conclusion of the matter. So, just again, reminding you all to keep an open and impartial mind, be, and be fair. Treat everyone equally.
Thank you. Okay, so, I believe we finished up with our last witness, is that correct? I'll ask the attorneys.
Finished up with the town's last witness.
Okay. So, I have to apologize, who is next up?
Mr. Chairman, I believe what counsel are in agreement that we're going to offer a closing as to each party's case, so this time I'll offer a brief closing.
Okay, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members, and again, as I've said in opening statement to you, I don't think we'll say enough, thank you very much for your time and effort for the town, it is greatly appreciated. We do recognize what a sacrifice you make in your personal lives and personal time for betterment of your community, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the time and attention you have put into this matter. We, I think all the parties recognize that the seriousness with which you take it and the attention that you have paid to it, and it is greatly appreciated. The town has presented to you both of the zoning officials who worked on this application, and I hope you likewise will recognize the effort that they have put into reviewing it. They have between the two of them, Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck, something on the order of 30 years of experience as zoning administrators, so they are not new to this field and are extremely accomplished people. I'm very proud to have presented them to you on the town's behalf. I know them to be extremely hardworking, caring public officials, and we should all be grateful to have folks like that in our community. When this board ultimately has this case to deliberate and decide, I'm sure that your counsel, your very able counsel, Mr. Golden, is going to remind you of several important legal factors that go into that. Legal concepts such as if this is appealed, what is going to be looked for in an appeal? That essentially, you have to be able to point to competent evidence in the record on which you are making your decision, and that you've done this without any errors of law involved. And I think he probably also remind you, you may also be reminded by the appellant that you have authority by statute to step into the shoes of a zoning administrator and make your own decision about what the application is. As to the first portion of that, the town stands by the record on appeal and the evidence that we put on in terms of the testimony of the zoning officials, that that, the position of the town, that those two things together provide you sufficient evidence that is competent, it is admitted, it's in the record, it's relevant, it is sufficient for you to put together and uphold their determination. Obviously, they wouldn't have reached that determination if they didn't feel it was the right one. It's the town's position that the determination was lawfully made in all respects. Now, the appellants are contending the contrary, but that boils down to a couple of things. Primarily, it's the, first and foremost, the lack of a landscape plan from a certified architect on day one of the application. Both Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck testified that they did not consider that to be fatal to the application, that it did not invalidate it in some way, that other applications that didn't have a certified landscape architect, landscape plan on day one weren't immediately invalidated in some way. You also saw in the record that that feature, that requirement was being addressed and ultimately has been addressed, the current application has in it a certified landscape architect's landscaping plan. That leads to the second point, that the appellant is sort of arguing for an extension of this permit choice law that sets a time period during which if the applicant has clearly put something on hold or they have failed to answer the questions posed to them by the zoning official during that period of time, it may become invalid. They are arguing for an extremely exacting degree of question and response, that if you don't have an immediate one-to-one identifiable, you ask question one, you got answer one, and there's no room for any other interpretation there. We don't have that case. I'm not comfortable, as the town's attorney, advising that that should be processed in that fashion. We may, when they get that case, we may have, or we may have a clarification in the statute, but I don't believe it's current law. So, moving on to the second thing that I think you'll be advised by your counsel, you do, and it is statutory, have authority to either sustain, amend, or substitute your own judgment about the approval of this plan. And on that notion, we as the town just urge you to exercise extreme caution. Again, it's the, the position of the town administration that the characterization of this plan is appropriate, as it was, is now designed. As you assume the authority of the planning director, you still have to apply the applicable ordinance, and you got to apply the correct sections to it. So, you know, suddenly deciding you think it's more like a hotel, for instance, we don't think is appropriate. And again, that's not in keeping with the town's position on this. I would urge you to think of it as the applicant trying to persuade upon you to apply their preferred reading of the ordinance to the plan. And you can see that through citation of things like the Planner's Dictionary, which is kind of cited to you as though it's controlling in some way, and it just isn't, it's a reference, it's one that they can turn to, but especially Ms. Tuck explained, and Ms. Eisenhower as well, they try to apply the ordinance first, and that is the duty of the zoning official. And again, the town's position is that was applied appropriately. So, we, again, just urge caution in not getting far afield and having some idea about how this, you're empowered to change that, that decision. That's essentially all I have for you. I thank you again for your time and attention.
And I think at this time, Mr. Noor, you were going to go, but is there a change of witnesses? So, just for the board's clarification, Mr. Noor, as the attorney for the appellant, would normally go first and put on his case, but I believe that there were some scheduling issues, and Mr. Noor has allowed the property owner, Mr. Portnoy, to put on a witness, but I don't think, you're just going to put the witness up, you're not going to make an opening statement?
Correct, it's just Mr. Vincent, who's the town clerk, and to respect his time, he was here all last night, too, waiting to be called.
Okay.
Wanted to be able, and Mr. Noor was kind enough, too, to agree to get him up here so he can be done.
Great, and the process that they had agreed to was that when each side went, they were going to do a short opening, present their case, and then do a short closing. Because we're taking this witness out of order, and it's the property owner's witness, Mr. Portnoy, he's not going to take the opportunity to have an opening statement, he'll do that when he would actually present his case in chief.
Thank you. Mr. Portnoy?
Officer Hickman, stand with it.
Brian, can you swear a minute, please?
Yes, I certainly can.
Thank you.
Mr. Vincent, if you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
All right, Mr. Vincent, thank you so much for taking the time to be here. My understanding is that you currently serve as the clerk for the Town of Woodfin, is that correct?
Correct.
And how long have you been in that role?
April will be two years.
As the town clerk, are you responsible for responding to public records requests?
Correct.
I'd like to hand to you what I'm currently mark, pre-marking, I believe it's exhibit five. Can you please take a look at that and let me know if you recognize what I've handed you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you tell the board what that is?
It's an email from Ben Irvin asking for his periodic public records request pertaining to the subject property, which was, he referenced the PIN numbers, Robin Hood Development, and I told him that yes, there's some activity from last week, and I've attached everything for you.
At this time, I'd like to move to admit this exhibit into the record.
No objection on the issue, does the board also want the attachment?
Yeah, and I'm about to ask, he's printed it out, we got to head that.
Does the board have any questions on entering this? Does the board have any questions on entering this into evidence? Okay, it has been entered in evidence as number five.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Vincent, if you can see at the top of the email, there's several attachments listed, correct?
Correct.
Did you bring those with you today?
Yes.
Okay, what I'd like to do is go through those, do you have a copy of the Record of Decision in front of you as well?
I do not, all right.
And then you have a, a big copy?
But I'd like to ask, the first attachment on the email is labeled 2020-07-18, response to 8/7/2022 letter from Woodfin final, is that correct?
Sorry, I'm just going to date, right?
No, you're fine, take your time.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and I'm having you multitask, if you could open up the Record of Decision, it's tab 18, so it would be RD 70? And can you let me know, once you're there, is, what's in the record as RD 70 the same document that's the first attachment in your email?
Correct.
If the board would like, he's printed copies out, but I figured just to save paper, just referring to the RDs and confirming, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's good.
All right, and then the second attachment is labeled 2022-7-20, letter to ASK RE Application Status, do you see that on your email as a label on the second exhibit?
Yes.
Okay, and if you take a look at what you printed out as that exhibit, and let me know if that is what's under tab 19 at RD 079 in the record?
Correct, it's the same.
Okay, and for the record, RD 079 is a July 20th, 2022, letter from Adrian Eisenhower to Derek Allen, is that correct?
Correct.
And in that letter, Ms. Eisenhower says, "To summarize, we agree the application was not placed on hold before February 11th, 2022. As a result, the application will remain valid at least until August 11th, 2022."
Correct.
Okay, so as of July 27th, Mr. Irvin had a copy of Ms. Eisenhower's July 20th, 2022 determination, is that accurate?
I object to what Mr. Irvin had, I think Mr. Vincent, what he sent, but we can't necessarily, whether he knows that Mr. Irvin received it.
Sustained.
You sent Mr. Irvin a copy of this email, RD 079, on July 20th, 2022?
I sent it to him on the 27th.
On the 27th?
Yes.
So, the letter's dated July 20th?
Correct.
And then there's a third attachment that is labeled in your email, letter, RE Application Status, 7 dot 13 dot 22. And is that what would be under? It would be tab, I believe, 17, so RD 068?
Correct, it's the same.
So, just to kind of close the loop, on July 27th, 2022, you sent Mr. Irvin a copy of the July 8th letter, that is RD 068, a copy of a July 18th letter, that is RD 070 And then lastly, a copy of a July 20th letter from Ms. Eisenhower, that is RD 079, correct?
Excuse me, Ryan, how many attachments were there then, total?
There's four.
Four, all right, so I have one, two, and three, so what RD number is the last one? I apologize.
That's right, I did not go over that last one. So, that's application, would that be the document that is in the record as RD 002?
No, 002 is a fax cover.
Oh, would it be RD 003, then, the application?
No.
Do you mind if I approach?
This is a rezoning application.
So, excuse me, I have one more question, if we're going any further, because maybe there's a lot of numbers, a lot of dates, a lot of names. Ryan, Mr. Vincent, I'm sorry, can you explain who, tell us who Ben Irvin is?
Just someone we get periodic record requests from about these subject properties in Robin Hood?
Yeah, Woodfin resident?
I don't know.
You don't know, okay. Do we have any other question? Okay, sorry, proceed, please.
So, after looking at the printout of what you have, would you agree that the last attachment is Town of Rezoning Application, so it's tab 15 at RD 064?
Correct.
And to clarify, because we're kind of stepping out of, there will be information as to who Mr. Vincent is later. I'm going to hand to you what is being pre-marked as exhibit six.
Before we go on, can you be, are you offering those other documents, are you just clarifying the association with the RD numbers, not introducing this as a separate?
They're already in the record, so I was just trying to, yeah, save paper and not have to print 10 copies, so. After you've had a chance to look at that document, can you tell me if you recognize it?
Yeah, I do.
Can you tell the board what it is?
It's just communications between me and Mr. Irvin about records about the application, or he requested a formal response from Ms. Eisenhower about the revised plan, so it's just a back-and-forth conversation about what procedures the application would follow, and if anything new, any new records had been entered and had been received by our office.
And this relates to the property at issue in this appeal?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to move to admit what's been marked as, was it exhibit five into the record? Or six, I apologize.
Any questions or objections from the board with this evidence?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then we will consider this property owner's exhibit number five, is that correct?
Six.
I'm sorry, you're right, six, and it has been entered in evidence, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, I just have one quick question, in the, I guess it's the top page, do you see the email from Ben Irvin to you dated August 22nd, 2022, at 1:13 PM?
Correct.
And in this email, Mr. Irvin says, "To address the application for Robin Hood Residential, we need to use the versions that applied before 5/18/2021," correct?
Correct.
And was your understanding that Mr. Irvin is asking for the Town of Woodfin zoning ordinance that was in effect before 5/18/2021?
Correct.
And that was in response, when he's referring to Robin Hood Residential, was it your understanding that he was referring to this, the property at issue in this case?
Correct.
That's all I have, thank you.
Good question.
Can you hold on one second, Mr. Portnoy? Do you feel a question for the witness?
I have a question for the witness. Can you tell us how many revisions were filed on this particular property?
I don't, honestly, I don't know, because I don't get all the revisions, so if I get like a request for it, I'll ask either Adrian, Shannon, or if they have anything new, and I'll just submit that, so I don't keep a log of the changes.
Oh, okay, okay, just curious.
Sorry, go ahead, proceed, Mr. Noor.
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Vincent, these were public records, correct?
Correct.
So, you're not verifying the authenticity of what you provided to Mr. Irvin, correct?
What do you mean?
He asked for documents, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You provided those documents, correct?
Correct.
Those documents may involve you, they may not involve, correct?
Correct.
You're just assembling documents?
Correct.
Providing them in response to the request, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, if I understand, testimony, right, is these are the documents that you provided to Mr. Irvin, correct?
Correct.
You can't testify as to, you know, if those documents were actually between so-and-so and Ms. Eisenhower, or however they're relevant, you just produced them in response to the request, correct?
I'm going to just object to that, we've just established that the documents he provided in the email were documents that were in the Record of Decision, and the parties have specifically stipulated to the authenticity and visibility of those already.
I'm not challenging either of those, I'm just asking him to verify, you know, what he was doing, and whether he was involved with all of the documents he produced, or just producing them.
It sounded to me that he was trying to suggest that the documents he's providing may or may not be authentic, and just to, for the record, he's testified that those are the same documents in the Record of Decision, which have already been stipulated as authentic. So, that's to the extent he's asking what he asked just then, I think I'm fine with it, to the extent he was suggesting the documents may or may not be authentic, that may or may not be.
All right, so we'll overrule the objection, but you're verifying what we agreed upon. You finished, I'm sorry, okay.
I don't have no questions for this witness.
Does the board have any questions for the witness? None being heard, then, thank you, Mr. Vincent, you are excused. Have a good evening.
Can we join you?
Yes, please.
So, I believe, with that being said, now we are going to go back to Mr. Noor.
I will echo Mr. Hennings' thanks, I know you've heard them, it may not feel like it's much of appreciation, considering you're still having to be here, but we do truly appreciate that you've taken three days in a row, including a Friday night, to be here for what is a very important issue to my clients. And what I'd like to do is start off by setting the table, I think we've heard a lot of information, and up until now, you've heard me ask questions, but you haven't necessarily heard me, or I haven't had the opportunity to articulate for you what my client's position is. So, let's start there. So, let's start with what we say the incorrect determinations are, okay? There's three of them, they're contained in the letter that we've already looked at from Ms. Tuck, but the review of the project, first one, review of the project would be based on the rules in place at the time of the application, May 17th, 2021. My client contends that was an incorrect determination. We're going to talk with you about why that is, we're going to present evidence from Ms. Bernstein about that, you've already heard evidence from Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower related to which ordinance applies, and we will bring that back up so that you have a full understanding about why we believe that was not correct. Second, that the revised site plan that consolidates all of the residential units and amenity areas into a single building would not be defined as a group development and would instead be classified as a multifamily building. Again, you heard a little bit about that last night, but we believe that determination was incorrect. We believe that this project is not a multifamily dwelling, is instead a group development, and regardless of it, isn't permitted in this zoning district, or requires conditional use approval, or conditional zoning approval. And lastly, and this gets to that, is that the site plan for the Robin Hood Development would receive ministerial review by the Woodfin Planning Board, not by staff. Our contention is that ministerial review is not appropriate for this kind of development in this land use. So, let's talk about the arguments, why do we say that? Argument one, May 2021 ordinance, old rules as we've been talking about, don't apply because the May 2021 application was never legally submitted. We're going to put the statute up that talks about, you only get to lock in old rules, what are called permit choice, when you have a submitted application. Submitted is not what the town zoning administrator says, it's what the law says it is. And we have North Carolina Court of Appeals case that talks about what submitted And we have North Carolina Court of Appeals case that talks about what submitted means, and submitted means complete. Two, the Ash County case, that's the case I was just referencing. Three, incomplete information means you don't get to pick the old rules, under state law. Second argument, May 2021 ordinance.
Okay, should I not stop you during any of these?
No, because you can't ask him any questions, because he's the lawyer.
And we will talk about all of these. This is laying off centrally, this is the roadmap, so to speak, and we will get to all the reasons why. Argument two, May 2021 ordinance, the old rules don't apply because the developer failed to provide additional information reasonably requested by the local government. We talked a little bit about that last night. It's not just about responding, it's that they didn't provide the information that was reasonably requested. May 17th, request for additional information from Ms. Eisenhower, the landscape plan by a licensed architect. Argument number three, the May 2021 ordinance, the old rules don't apply because the developer put the May 2021 application on hold for over six months. This is the Chris Day email that you saw last night. Argument number four, the applications are a group development and cannot be approved by ministerial review. This starts with a little bit of what we talked about last night, with, these are short-term rentals, they are not multifamily dwellings. If they're not multifamily dwellings, they are not permitted in the mountain zoning district, and instead require conditional approval. Instead, short-term rentals meet the definition of hotel, motel, boarding house, and lodging house. Additionally, you'll hear testimony from Ms. Bernstein about how these are actually three buildings, not one. But also, as we've already discussed, the number of the short-term rentals exceed the threshold for being a group development. And it just doesn't fit under the definitions in the code. These are the four arguments that we're going to talk about, why those determinations are incorrect. One of the things I want to emphasize is, again, the law. I think Mr. Hennings asked you to be cautious in your decision. What I would ask you to do is to follow the law. State law controls the decision that has to be made here. In every single of the arguments, in each of the arguments that I outlined, we will cite to specific provisions in the ordinance, we will cite to state law, we will cite to case law that interprets those. And that is what the board is required to follow. You heard a lot on the previous nights about what typically happens in the town. But just because something typically happened in Woodfin doesn't mean that that is in compliance with either the ordinance or state law. We're not saying that Ms. Eisenhower or Ms. Tuck are doing bad jobs, or anything like that. But over the course of over a year and a half and multiple submissions, mistakes can and have been made. You heard about some of those mistakes and interpretation being acknowledged last night. Our arguments will flesh that out, and essentially what we're asking you to do is what the law empowers you to do, which is, you heard the decision that was made. It was an incorrect decision, and we are asking you to correct that through your judgment and a reversal of the determinations that were made. At this point, we can call Jessica Bernstein as our first witness.
Brian can swear?
Yes. Ms. Bernstein, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
So Ms. Bernstein, you've already been sworn in, and twice now, and that's okay. You've given your full name, we've gone through all the background, we did that through the standing, but I'd like to go ahead and jump in to the substance of the appeal and the reasons for it. First is, if I can approach. I'm handing you what's been marked as exhibit 6.1 through 6.2. Can you identify that for the board, please?
This is my affidavit.
Okay. And you executed this on the back, 6.2, correct?
I did.
Okay, and this relates to both special damages, but also identifies the deed book and pages related to the property and those rights that you claim as part of this relation, or part of this, the property rights that you claim, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we'd ask that this be admitted into the record.
I'm going to object, this has nothing to do with the actual merits of the case, this goes back to standing, which is already been addressed.
She's identified the document, it's her affidavit, it speaks to her interests in the property, it speaks to her contention of property rights that she claims in this case, it's highly relevant to the case in general, I think it should be admitted.
That's what we addressed already.
So we'll overrule, would like to see the information, please.
Ms. Bernstein, can you?
Excuse me, does anybody have any objections to this, to evidence, on the board?
No.
Okay, so, being approved, this exhibit 6.1 will be admitted for the Bernstein CRLU.
And for clarity in the record, it is 6.1 through 6.2, the back page.
Thank you, 6.1 through 6.2.
Okay. Ms. Bernstein, can you talk with the board about your professional background?
I have a bachelor's degree in political science, and I have a master's degree in city and regional planning. I have worked as a professional planner since graduate school, since, so, just about 20 years. My, most recently, my position was as a city planner with the City of Asheville, and I held that position for just about 15 years. My responsibilities there were primarily large-scale development review, being the planner who would analyze and review and present on any manner of larger-scale developments, including ministerial reviews, as well as conditional use permits, conditional zonings, design review variances related to those projects. I also then, while facilitating the review for the developers, would work with the public, the community members, to help them find their appropriate path for public engagement, and relaying information about the projects to the neighbors, anyone who came in to ask about projects. So, kind of working both with the developer to facilitate their path, but also balancing that with relaying all of that to the neighborhoods. I also reviewed and wrote zoning ordinances for the UDO. And then prior to that, I worked in other communities in Massachusetts and in Pennsylvania, doing city planning as well.
So essentially, you've been doing that for approximately 20 years at this point?
Just about.
I'm handing you what's marked as exhibit 4.1. Can you identify this, please?
Yes. This is a resume of my qualifications.
This is your resume, to be clear?
Yes, my, yeah, mine.
And does this highlight a lot of the information you just provided or relate to the board?
It does.
Including educational background and work experience? We'd ask that this be admitted into evidence as exhibit 4.1.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, you have to see it first, or? Okay. Okay, well, the board agrees, we'll admit this as exhibit 4.1 for Bernstein CRLU.
Couple of questions about, again, the work that you had just testified you've been involved in for over 20 years, or approximately 20 years, forgive me. As an urban planner, what experience do you have with interpreting zoning codes and ordinances?
When reviewing development applications that come in, that's all, a lot of that is based in taking the codes that are in place, and applicable statutes, and interpreting them for, to determine whether or not projects comply with those codes and statutes and ordinances along the way.
Can I ask a question to the witness? Is it often that you come up with discrepancies in the interpretation of an ordinance? And how do you resolve those type of disagreements between different parties, or understanding or interpretation of the meaning of the ordinance?
I think that it's fair to say that codes can be interpreted in different ways by different people, that's been evidenced, that, you know, that does come up.
Okay, so, I guess to restate the question, so the discrepancies or disagreements, or different interpretations of code come up? And what is usually the course of action to come to a conclusion about what the right determination is for any given situation?
I think that would depend really specifically on what the question is, and what's being, you know, what is the interpretation, or what's the discrepancy, and what are the different paths that would result in. So it's really not a one-size-fits-all, I think.
Okay. Just a couple of follow-ups.
Yeah.
When there's different interpretations, that depends on the particular ordinance you might be talking about, correct?
Yes.
Some ordinances are very clear?
Sure, yes.
Some might have some ambiguity, correct?
Yes.
Some might have terms that are not in the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes.
And in those situations, you have to go and find a definition for that if it's not defined in the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
But you would start by looking at the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
And then, if you don't find that, use your professional judgment, training, and experience, correct, to come up with the best interpretation you can, based on your review of the ordinance and other materials. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. And I would ask, how many times you had done that, how many times do you think you've had to do that kind of work, just to give a context for the board?
I, in almost 15 years, primarily doing development review, I was involved in reviewing, I don't even know how many, over 100 projects throughout Asheville, and all of them require some sort of interpretation of the codes and ordinances and standards that are before you.
And have you ever testified in a quasi-judicial proceeding in your capacity as a land use professional?
I have participated in quasi-judicial hearings for, yes.
At this point, we would ask that Ms. Bernstein be qualified, she is a fact witness, but we would also ask, based on her training, experience, and education, that she be qualified as an expert in land use planning, for the reasons that, and experience that we've just talked about.
We're allowed to do that.
I was going to say, we'd object to that, based on the limited information we've been provided, being an expert under the law is a very high standard to me, as we saw from his experts. They were PhDs who have been published in the field numerous times, and it doesn't sound like she's had the standard. The extremely high standard to be qualified as an expert in this case. We don't object, obviously, there are certain factors.
Let me respond.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I don't agree that it's this extremely high standard, that's not what the law says, that's not in any evidence book, that's not in any statute, that's not the law. What it does say is, experts are based, are determined based on their training, experience, and education. You have an individual who clearly has a master's in urban planning, okay? I had previous experts had a PhD, I also had another appraiser who did not, but had over 40 years of experience. In this situation, you have someone who has 20 years of experience, a master's degree in the content area that she wants to speak to you about, that more than crosses the threshold of being an expert.
So let me just clarify, you want her to be considered an expert in the field of planning?
Land use planning, correct.
I just want to make sure we can legally do that.
Well, so, expert testimony is governed by Rule 702, I just pulled it out. "If scientific, technical, or other specialized knowledge will assist the trier fact to understand the evidence or to determine a fact in issue, a witness qualified as an expert by knowledge, skill, experience, training, or education may testify thereto in the form of an opinion or otherwise, if all of the other following apply. The testimony is based on sufficient facts or data, the testimony is the product of reliable principles and methods, and the witness has applied the principles and methods reliably to the facts of the case." And I think what you all are saying is, you're asking me, how can one individual who's going to testify about certain facts, then offer an opinion about her own factual testimony?
I'm, I guess a conflict of interest is what I'm, just want to make sure we're not.
To address that concern, what you're saying is bias, well, can I trust what she's saying? Okay, that's different than whether she's an expert. What do I believe her is weighing of the evidence? And she's going to give her testimony, she's going to give you the reasons why for that. And Rules, and the Rule 702, 2, 3, that area for expertise, does not, in fact, it doesn't at all preclude experts from talking about facts if they are personally aware of them. So, again, I will be very clear when I'm asking Ms. Bernstein about what her professional opinion would be, versus, what did you observe, see, hear, do, et cetera? And I also emphasize that opinions were given for the last two nights by Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck, who were not qualified as experts, in their work and interpretation of the codes that we're dealing with tonight. We have every right to present evidence in response to that, as part of our due process rights, to talk about whether we think those ordinances were properly interpreted or not. And Ms. Bernstein shouldn't be put at a disadvantage because she has this training and experience, simply because she is also the person who's brought this case.
Comparing the testimony from Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck is not the same thing. They were testifying in their capacity as the planning directors and zoning administrators, in applying the town of Woodfin's code and ordinances as they are required to do in that role. Ms. Bernstein has never worked at the town of Woodfin. This is trying to create a situation that's just not legally for Ms. Holt to put her as an expert on that issue.
He said it's not for Ms. Holt, but not cited to any authority to tell you that.
And I'll read it again, "If scientific, technical, or other specialized knowledge will assist the trier fact, you all, to understand the evidence or to determine a fact in issue, the witness qualified as an expert by knowledge, skill, experience, training, or education may testify thereto in the form of opinion." Mr. Nor did indicate that if you all have concerns about bias, you can believe all, some, or none of what she testifies to in the form of opinion. But the testimony by the experts, based on the knowledge, skill, experience, training, or education, if you think it will assist you all to understand the evidence or to determine a fact in issue, you can qualify her as an expert, bearing in mind that you can believe some, none, or all of what she has to say, whether it's fact or opinion.
I'm going to answer you in one second. So my opinion is, based upon her experiences like that, I feel confident that we could qualify her as an expert. In her feeling, but I want to make sure we're good. Okay, so you're overruled because we believe that she can be qualified as an expert in her field. And we will ask Mr. Nor that we can separate the personal questions from the professional questions, and let us know when we're switching back and forth, please.
And I'd ask that you let me know if that's not clear. I want to make sure that there's a clear separation between that two.
Okay, you don't like?
I just, I feel like there's a, like, a gray line there, but.
We're all right?
But I can, like he said, we can choose to.
And just for the record, to preserve our rights, we had asked numerous times, and even months before, for the petitioners to identify experts. They did not do so. We were not made aware of this, obviously, now, we do not know her credentials, this is all be provided to us immediately. I understand you just gave it to us, though. And so we have not had an opportunity to actually evaluate this situation, and actually explore the law, and having a fact witness serve as this, fact witness who has worked with Ms. Tuck in the past, and so, again, for the record, we're just reserving our right to challenge this at a later time.
Understood. Understood.
Just for clarity, we weren't provided with any of their experts either. So, I don't want you to be thinking as though we held something back and we were given that in return. And I don't believe the witness has testified that she previously worked with Ms. Tuck. So, again, for the record, I wanna make sure that that testimony is not provided unless there are witnesses.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you still in a, in a position where you were a planning, an urban, a city planner?
I'm not, currently.
Why did you leave the position at, with Asheville?
I was doing remote work and remote school at the same time, and we kept my son home for longer than, after the schools went back into session, and so I simply could not do remote school and remote work at the same time. So, it's been, it was August, October 2021, so just over a year.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Bernstein, I'm sort of jumping back in at this point, and I, in preparing for your testimony today, did you review the decisions being appealed, the record of decisions, the applications that were provided to town, all of that information that we've been talking about in different ways over the last couple of days?
I have.
Okay. And do you also, I know it's come up before, have you used the Planner's Dictionary before?
I have.
Okay. And what is that period, just again, clarity on what we're talking about there?
Uh, just a, the Planner's Dictionary is a, a reference manual that provides definitions and, and just additional information that, that we, planners can use when things are not clear or not, or not defined.
And as a reference, do, uh, there's been some testimony about, well, it's just a reference. Well, how do you use a reference in this field?
Um, this is a reference that's put out by the American Planning Association, so it's a, you know, which is kind of our, our, our organization as, as planners. And what was the question?
Well, how do you use it? Essentially, well, how does a reference serve? Is it just something you casually use? Is this a highly considered document? Help the board understand what significance this has?
I think it can be considered a highly used document, a go-to reference.
I'm handing you what's been marked as Exhibit 7.1. The Planner's Dictionary is a lot bigger than this, correct?
Yes.
And I am happy, if the board would like it, I can produce an entire copy of the dictionary that would be this big and enter that into the record, but what I instead did was a, a selection of the...
I would just ask, I know this is only portion, but I think it's important for you to use the Planner's Dictionary to actually see the beginning because it has a very specific reference as to the significance of, of this and how it's a reference guide, just for a different case. I think that's an important fact for the board to have.
I'm sorry, you wanna, the beginning of what, the cover of the book?
Correct, yeah. The kind of briefcase and explanation of what the purpose of the book is and how it works.
We are happy to... Need one more? Sorry.
The Planner's Dictionary is state by state, or is it kind of a national?
Is there a way for us to bring up the study?
Answer that versus me.
It's not, so it's, it's put out by the American Planning Association, and, and when you look at, when they give definitions or examples of things, it's pulled from all across the country.
Okay.
Is it commonly used as a tool for...
So, I believe you still have an objection, correct?
Oh, yes.
Correct, yeah. I think it's important to have that part at least to explain what is used for the reference. And again, that these are just random provisions from different states and things like that.
So, are you asking, I'm gonna clarify, are you asking that the witness just explain what this book is, or you wanna actually physically see a copy of this book? Does one of...
I think it's important if you provide a portion of it to at least provide the, the introduction, the explanation of how the book is made and what the purpose of the book is.
Okay.
A couple of ways we could do this for the board here. We have a physical copy of it, I have an electronic copy of it, we can do it, I can provide the entire thing later to the board, we could go make photocopies, I think Ms. Tuck had offered to do that.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Portnoy, which will satisfy the objection, because I don't wanna make out 10 copies of the whole book.
No, and we don't want the whole book.
I mean, would you be satisfied if they show you the book and, and let the witness testify that that's the book, that this is, this pages were taken from?
So, we've, we've actually seen the book, the objection is directed at, we want to make sure the board has a complete understanding of what the book is as, as the book describes itself. So, we're, we're asking for specifically is that the introduction, basically everything before the definitions start, at the very least, is admitted along with this.
So, what I think we can do here is we can admit this, and on cross-examination, if they want to add something to it, they can enter an exhibit that is the introduction to the book, and then the board would have it.
He, he just offered to put the whole thing in the record, and now he's saying he doesn't want to.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, as the chair asked, how would you...
Yeah, I don't think that was quite the conversation, the conversation, what, what would you like to see so we can move along with this question?
It'd be displayed on the...
So, what I was saying is, we've taken off on it, offered to do the whole thing. However, since we don't want to, you know, take up all this time printing and all that stuff, the introduction, basically everything before the definitions start would be sufficient as far as we're...
So, you said if the introduction is read into...
Not read into the record. We want it, we want copies of that admitted along with these excerpts.
Can we bring a copy of the preface up on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, I can right now.
But, but I think, and you wanna, you...
In the record.
Okay, yeah, all right, so, both. So, do you have any, do you have any problems, objections to, and copying the introduction page and, and admitting that along with your, the red page?
I do not mind including the introduction to the version that I'm, I think it's the same here.
We're fine doing it, just in the board's aware, we're talking about eight pages.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're fine doing it during the break.
Again, ours is just to preserve the record and make sure the whole, that section's in the record as well.
Okay, then I guess officially we'll say your objection is sustained because we were going to, Mr. Noor will add the requested pages into evidence during our break.
Right. I might ask just slightly different so that I can start asking questions about this, is that can I enter this as Exhibit 7.1 through 7.8, and that I will supplement with a follow-up exhibit that we will mark, that will be the introduction during the break?
I think we'll go with that, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. Proceed, please.
For the record, this has now been admitted into evidence, 7.1 through 7.8.
It will be. One second, please. Nope, sorry. Thank you. Yep. Questions or concerns from the board? Okay, then, yes, this Planner's Dictionary document will be entered in as Exhibit 7.1 for the Bernstein C R L U.
Okay. Ms. Bernstein, Exhibit 7.1 through 7.8, can you just identify its contents for the board so that they're aware how you use these pages?
Uh, it has the cover of the Planner's Dictionary and then excerpts that have definitions. Some, some of the terms are defined with just one submittal, some of them have multiple definitions. They state where the definitions are pulled from, what, what community, what state.
And some of the definitions were relevant to your review of these, this appeal and your position in this case, correct?
Yes.
And your view of each of those. So, sort of orienting you, during my opening, I talked about our different arguments. So, I'd like to sort of orient your mind in talking about Argument 1, which was about completeness submitted. I'd like to start, and I'll put it on the screen here. Are you familiar with 143755 Permit Choice Statute? We talked a little bit about this yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. Says, "And if a development permit applicant submits a permit application for any type of development, and a rule or ordinance is amended, including an amendment to any applicable land use regulation, between the time the development permit application was submitted and the development permit decision is made, the development permit applicant may choose which adopted version of the rule or ordinance will apply to the permit and use of the building, structure or land indicated on the permit application." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So, in this situation, the permit choi, is this commonly referred to as permit choice in North Carolina?
It is.
Okay. And does permit choice in this context, it's dependent on when an application is submitted, correct?
Objection, he's calling for a legal conclusion, not for her opinion of what the land is planned for.
I think her testimony, I think her testimony was that she regularly applies the statutes and ordinances part of her work. She was qualified as an expert in this area, and I'm asking her to do what she does on a daily basis and was qualified as an expert to do.
Mr. Noor made an objection on the very same basis we did yesterday, that we just did on, on testimony that was heard yesterday from Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower.
There's a key distinction there, that neither Ms. Tuck or Ms. Eisenhower were qualified as experts, and so giving an opinion is exactly what experts are entitled to do under Rule 705. That's why I qualified Ms. Bernstein as an expert, so she could offer those kind of opinions. And my objection yesterday was that we didn't have that kind of foundation laid for those experts, for those witnesses.
And we're just gonna have this sort of due process violation in this respect for the testimony as an expert at this point.
So, witness qualified as an expert by knowledge, skill, experience, training or education may testify thereto in the form of an opinion if all of the following apply. The testimony is based on sufficient facts or data, the testimony is the product of reliable principles and methods, and the witness has applied those principles and methods reliably, reliably to the facts of the case. All three have to apply. And so, if you've heard sufficient testimony about facts or data, testimony that is the product of reliable principles and methods, and that the witness applies those methods to the facts, then you might accept, you might consider accepting her opinion. If you don't think that all three of those have applied, then you might consider not accepting her opinion.
Well, we can still hear her opinion, but we just don't have to accept it? Or you mean we should not allow that?
They've, they've objected to it, and so, based on that objection and what you've heard thus far, if all of the following apply...
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've not asked her what her opinion is applying, this, I'm at, this is the foundation of what did you look at? This is the process and methodology in the context of a zoning determination. You look at the statutes, you look at the facts, you apply the statutes and the ordinances to the facts. That's the process, and then you come up with an opinion. I've asked her, starting with the statute, did you, we're just at the beginning, I'm trying to lay that foundation that Mr. Goulden just read.
Then that should not be in the form of an opinion, but that's gonna be up to you whether you all make the determination as to whether you will allow her to testify as an opinion as an expert, if you're satisfied that all three of those have been left.
Let me maybe rephrase it, and we can get through this, so I'll withdraw the question for a second, for, for now.
Okay, if he withdraws it, then, there's no objection?
Yeah, we're still, sorry, reserving our rights to the qualification of her as a due process violation.
So, Ms. Bernstein, do you regularly use this statute in applying or making a determination on a permit choice type situation?
This would be the statute for a permit choice situation.
So, this is the sort of framework and process you would start with in order to form an opinion, correct?
Correct.
Not exclusively, but it's a component of it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in that context, completeness becomes, or excuse me, submittal, it says, when the applicant submits, I'm just reading from the statute there. In that case, are you familiar with what the definition of submitted is, at least according to the courts? And I'm gonna throw something up, you can answer the question as to whether you're aware of it or not.
I, I, I don't know that definition.
Okay. I will, this is the Ash County case, I will throw that up there. Are you familiar with the Ash County case?
I am.
Okay.
I'm going to object, to the extent she's, I mean, Mr. Goulden, I can see you nodding your head, to the extent she's testifying about case law, that is completely outside. If she continues to do this, this is an absolute violation of our rights. This is getting, this is getting beyond what's even professional at this point.
So, in, in, what I will say is, in closing arguments, you can cite to a case. You cannot reference a case and say you need to apply that law of that case to these facts. You can't do that. And I think she is getting very close to doing that, saying that the law of that case should be applied to the facts of this case.
That's not what I'm gonna ask her at all.
All right, so, I say we should be sustaining the objection and go down a little...
I'll ask a different question. Are you aware of the case or not?
I am aware of the case.
Okay. So, do you believe that case would be relevant in the analysis that you need to perform to order it to give an opinion?
I'm going to object, this is making a link, closing argument for a witness. This is completely inappropriate.
I, I, so, I've heard that now twice, and the statement of unprofessional, without a single citation to anything that would make that so. That is highly prejudicial, and it's, more importantly, not useful for this board to get the information that it needs. I've simply asked if she's aware of it and if she would use it in forming her opinion.
In any case?
Yes.
Not in this one.
Can I ask a question to the witness? So, you, you chose, along with your husband and organization, to file an appeal to this permit, or, you know, to this application. When you did that, you cited specific errors that you found and points that you're appealing to their permanent application. When you did that, one of those points, and we can go through them all, you know your points, is with regard to when the application was submitted and was there a, you know, which ordinance applies and permit choice, yada, yada. And in doing that, you, you had to make some choices around, you know, were these valid appeals? Is that true? I mean, you, you made some choices around which, which things you felt were incorrect with the application, right?
You, you said valid appeals? Did you mean valid middles?
Your, no, no, your, your appeal...
Okay.
Is, addresses specific points about their application, right? And those points, and we've, we've heard some of them, have to do with the, the way that, that it was submitted, the completeness, she listed a few, and, and do some of those require that you have an awareness of things that have happened like this in the past with this Ash case, for example? Have you, have you heard of this Ash case before? He brought it up on the screen.
It, the case is, is specifically referenced in our appeal.
Okay. So, then why is it not...
The appeal that was prepared by...
Did you know about the Ash case before you...
That's serving as, she's now serving as an attorney.
I, how about I help try and, I don't believe that's true, but I want us to get to you all hearing the information instead of necessarily fighting over, over this aspect of it.
Well, I still have the objection, so I'm still just, this is on a real legal matter now, so now I'm...
Let me withdraw the question.
I don't know the word.
I'll withdraw the question, and we'll go in a different...
Okay, I thought since it was referenced, since this is all in the paperwork here, we could go look at that thing...
Correct.
That was on the screen.
But, so, so the issue is, is what the intent of using that case for? You can read the holding in that case, you can read what the court said, but for someone to say, because that court ruled this way, you have to rule that same way. Can't do that. I believe she's getting very dangerously close to that. Mr. Noor is not going to agree that she is, but that's exactly what I think that they are trying to do. But I'm not telling you how to rule, I'm saying if you think she can give an opinion about that case, several issues arise for me, but that's gonna be up to you as a board to decide whether you want to hear it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to ask her what Mr. Goulden is afraid I'm going to ask her. I asked her if she was aware of it and had she used it, and then I was gonna move on to, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to ask her that. So, I, let me, I've, I've withdrawn the question, so there's really nothing to object to at this point, and if I can move on to my next question, I'll do that.
Okay, Mr. Portnoy.
I just wanna clarify too, for the record, that part who's initially stipulated to provide an opening brief for the board, we actually prepared those, it's lengthy, it goes into detail, our hope was to allow you to have some context. They objected after we all prepared them to have you guys having them at this point. He's effectively now trying to get his brief in through his own fact witness.
Don't even, so, I've not asked her anything about a brief, I've not, I, I'm really not understanding what this objection is, but I've withdrawn the question, and happy to move on to the next one.
All right, so, Mr. Portnoy, he's re, if he's taken that question away, are you okay at this point?
I think they'll withdraw that question. I mean, I, I unfortunately don't think that this is going to be a very efficient question which y'all can see, and again, just have to resort to due process rights after asking him to provide us, I think in November, December, July... December, decided by experts, we were never provided that number here, having a fact witness as an expert.
This is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, this is being used as a way to complain about how they didn't get information when they also didn't provide the same to us, and it's entirely inappropriate for this board, because it has nothing to do with your ultimate decision of whether the determinations were incorrect or not. And so, if I can, I'd like to move on with the questions.
All right, so, Mr. Nor is going to withdraw the question. The objection is now going to be withdrawn because that question doesn't exist, but I can say that I guess we have to, I don't know, just tread lightly.
I'm going to move it along with this.
Because if we're agreeing that we're going toward the wrong way, I don't want to, since this has been told that this could go further and further in the years coming forward, I don't want to do anything illegal or that can be questioned that we're doing something wrong.
Well, to be clear, I told you I was not going to ask the questions that Mr. Goulden was concerned about. I'm not going to, and I'd like to ask some different ones.
Okay. Please proceed. Are we, the board good with this?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, please proceed.
Ms. Bernstein, I'd asked about, we talked about completeness and submittal, okay? Based on your, on your review of the materials that provided to the town, what was your professional opinion about the completeness of the application that was sent on May 17, 2021?
And I'm going to just do a standing objection to all these questions about her opinion and her professional capacity for the reasons that you already stated. Don't believe she's qualified as an expert.
He keeps making the same objection in order to slow this down.
This is the, this is the concern, the question I have about mixing the personal and professional questions. Is there a conflict of interest that we should be aware of, or are we supposed to listen to all of it, and then we decide what we listen to and don't listen to?
Well, and I guess, again, what I, all I can do, because I can't rule for you, when there is an opinion to be given, an expert can testify in the form of an opinion, if at all, if, if at all, if all of the following apply: testimony is based on sufficient facts or data, the testimony is the product of reliable principles and methods, the witness has applied the principles and methods reliably to the fact. What I can say for sure is Mr. Nor just asked her if she has an opinion, and it's going to be up to you to determine, can she give an opinion because has there been sufficient facts or data? Is the testimony the product of reliable principles and methods, and has the witness applied those principles and methods reliably to the facts of the case? Go ahead, Mr. Nor.
If I can, let me back up, I'll ask a couple, three, four foundational questions that will address all of those questions.
Well, let me, I have to address this objection, correct?
You're making the same objection over and over. It's not a new one.
But can I, can I clarify what you're concerned with about the conflict of interest? The fact that she happens to also be a master in her field, I mean, we can't disregard everything she has to say just because she's also the person who submitted the thing. So, she's one person, and she's going to state her opinion, and we have to hold it as an expert and as the person who's giving testimony. I don't think there's a way to try and make two people out of it. We don't need to. There's no need.
So I guess what I'm looking to do is that if the board agrees, we're going to allow the questioning and the information. We're going to acknowledge your concern as a matter of record, but I think we should allow the questioning to continue so that we can get all the information, and, because we have already agreed that she's an expert.
It's just her opinion, it's just one-
Yes, it's her opinion. She has met the three qualifications that were being-
And I just want to, and everybody's reading something, and I just want to read North Carolina Evidence Courtroom Manual. This is a quasi-judicial courtroom. Rules of evidence apply. Some of them apply more loosely than others, but in civil matters, the defendant in a medical malpractice action testifying as an expert on his own or her own behalf creates special challenges.
And before-
In the case, the plaintiff did not make a formal request that the defendant be qualified as an expert. The Court of Appeals held that it might be improper to qualify the defendant as an expert in front of a jury when to do so would constitute a judicial expression of opinion as to the defendant's own case. It presents problems. It's not improper, but it presents problems.
To be clear, that's in a med-mal case, not a zoning quasi-judicial determination.
The same principles apply.
It's a mal, but it's-
And I think he's right when he, you take the evidence as you've heard it, you weigh that evidence, and you give it the credibility you think it deserves.
In this case, she's also, I mean, she's trying to testify on the ultimate issue of the case, which makes it worse than even the case Mr. Nor decided.
I'm not even asking any questions about that, yet he presumes to know what is going to come next. I would like to ask the foundational questions about how she went-
Can I ask the board a question? Okay? We have to decide what our own opinion is on everyone we hear, not just her. Everyone we hear. So, therefore, I think that we're not getting enough credit for the fact that we are trying to be impartial, or we are impartial on this. I'm sorry, I got my back to you. And so, at some point in time, we have to decide whether we're not going to have her at all as a witness, or whether we're going to listen to what she says and make our own, form our own opinions about what it is that she is testifying to, or what it is that she's saying. So, it's kind of more like, we are not a bunch of dummies, you know? We're people who are intelligent, and we're people who are here because we are concerned about the community. And so, therefore, we need to think more about how we can make a decision based on what we hear from everyone and go from there. I mean, we have to think about the fact that we have, that we're viable, you know, we're viable. What do you guys think of that? I mean, it's not that we're just a board listening. We have, you know, background. We are making, forming opinions about things. It's-
Well, and what I will say to move this along, because we'll be here all night talking amongst ourselves, I read the courtroom manual, what it says about that presents difficulties. This board, if it's concerned about bias, as Mr. Nor indicated, can believe some, all, or none of what is testified to by the witness, and if the board hears an objection and agrees that it shouldn't be heard, they can sustain that objection. If the board, if a witness, an expert witness is being asked in the form of an opinion, you have to ensure that all three of the following apply, as I've read to you before. And I do believe Mr. Portnoy can make an objection after every question if he wants to, but don't hold that against his client. And Mr. Nor's advocacy for his client, if you don't like that, don't hold it against his client. It is what they are here to do, it is this board's responsibility to listen to the evidence, apply that to the way that it interprets the ordinance, and if based on this witness's knowledge, skill, experience, training can help you understand, maybe you should listen to it, maybe you shouldn't. That's up to you.
What do we think? With all that being said?
Well, we've already allowed her to be-
That's right.
-an expert witness, so I don't think we can-
I'm comfortable hearing her opinion and making my judgment about it.
Me too.
Okay. So, Mr. Portnoy, we're going to take that under advisement, but I'm going to overrule your objection, and we will be impartial with listening and pay attention to what's going on.
Now, I don't know if it'll help speed up if we can just have a standing objection on anything bad. I mean, it's serious, so I don't have to speak.
You want to just admit it in the record, that's what you want.
Yeah, just in the record that every time he asks about her professional opinion and expert, we are objecting on the ground that she's not properly qualified as an expert.
Well, and what I will say is, I don't think that that would be appropriate, because there may be some issues that, you can say you have a standing objection, but if there is something that is objectionable-
I have to object.
Absolutely, because the board will never be able to make a ruling, and-
That's why I ask, okay?
So, we understand your concerns, so as long as we're going down that road, we'll say we understand your concerns, but if you do have something that you, independently you object to outside of that, then please-
I'm just trying to speak.
Right, you don't have to give a reason. If you just want to say, my standing objection for these reasons, and then you just offer an objection, I think the board would need to rule on that.
Okay, understood.
Okay? Board's good?
Yeah.
Mr. Nor, you're good. You can proceed, please.
Ms. Bernstein, we were talking about reviewing of the application and its completeness. When you review an application, what kind of facts and data do you take into consideration when you're making that determination?
When reviewing an application to determine completeness, we would look at what is required in the ordinance and other applicable statutes in the UDO.
Okay. And, and once you have that, and did you look at the equivalency of those things in this case?
We did.
Did you, once you have looked at those facts and data, what is the process through which you go, or the methodology to then compare those facts to the standard for completeness to make a determination? How do you make, how do you determine whether it's complete or not? It may seem deceptively simple, but-
No, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
I'll ask it another way. So, you said you took the information that's provided, if I heard that correctly. You look at what's required in the UDO correctly, correct? And then you compared the two? Is that fair?
Correct.
To determine whether everything has been submitted that is required under the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Did you do that in this case?
We did.
Is that a typical practice for those in the planning field on how they would compare what is submitted to what is required in the ordinance to determine whether an application is complete?
Yes.
Yeah, they say it's going for a professional opinion as an expert. We object to that.
So, I think we're going to have to overrule those, if we can keep hearing.
I don't know that I agree on that one, because I don't know if, whether or not she can speak for it being a standard practice for everybody.
All other organizations.
Okay.
I think she, forgive me, I interrupted.
So, I guess we can sustain the objection and question pertaining to this case.
So, I asked her if this is a standard practice. That's not an opinion. She either knows it or she doesn't. She said she's a member of this profession. I think someone in the profession could testify as to whether that's a standard practice or not within the profession.
I feel like it's going to be different in every city or county, what, how their departments operate in reviewing applications.
I think that may be the answer she'd give. I don't know, but that-
I think that is in different industries I've been a part of. I know that my counterparts in other parts of the country-
Do things differently.
Do things differently.
Okay. Even in my own organization, they do it differently.
But she can still, she can still give her testimony to it and say what she feels is the process as she-
And we can agree or disagree, or listen to it or don't listen to it.
We just need to have a vote. You're going to sustain the objection or overrule it? We got to move it along.
Okay. Let's see, who would like to have it sustained?
I'm sustaining it, and maybe you can ask the question in a different way.
Overruled?
Overruled.
Overruled. Not to me. Let's, let's sustain the objection, let's ask the question a different place.
In this context, did you look at the facts, the application materials provided, compared to what was in the ordinance?
We did.
And what is your opinion about the completeness of the application?
Same objection, just to extend to these specific facts, and as you all just said, it depends. I think we even had testimony, it depends, county to county.
Hold on. She, he asked if, what was her opinion about the completeness of this application? Well, obviously she thinks it wasn't complete, or she wouldn't have written this.
Right.
Clear, I wrote that.
Okay, okay. She wouldn't have paid somebody to write that.
But yeah, we best find those local woodfin ordinances, and as y'all just testified, or just noted that those are specific, and I haven't heard anything that she's actually worked in the town of Woodfin or familiar with those practices.
Experts can testify to that. Mr. Dr. Finley, for example, is not a traffic engineer in the town of Woodfin. However, he provided that kind of testimony to this board related to standing.
So, in order to keep this- Can I ask the same question to you as a non-professional? Okay, so take off your expert hat.
Yes.
You read this application.
Yes.
And what was your opinion as to the completeness of the application?
That it was incomplete.
As your job as a planner with Asheville or Buncombe?
Asheville.
Did you ever receive incomplete applications?
Yes.
So, I would think that on this case, to keep this moving along, we should overrule it. We should listen to all the information and then decide amongst ourselves whether we agree with what we're hearing in testimony from, is that okay?
That's the way I feel about it.
So, we're going to overrule your objection and leave it at that.
Your testimony was that it was incomplete. Can you identify for the board the two things, or however many things you identified that were incomplete about the application?
I believe there was testimony last night from Ms. Eisenhower on the low-numbered list that she sent to the applicant, asking for more information in order to make the plan complete. And then I also would believe that there's additional information related to utilities for the development that would be required to make it complete.
What about, and I-
Objection to the characterization of the email as what would make the application complete. And a further objection, because we don't know the facts that you gave us here, but the expert opinion has to be based on the facts?
Yeah.
And we don't know what she was looking at, any ordinance to make this thing in?
Okay. Do we have the criteria for an application that is complete? And we can put it on the screen, and we know. That is what you need to have a complete application. We keep on talking about it's not complete, it's partially complete. What is a complete application?
That is the heart of this entire appeal. And what I'm throwing up-
We'll have to kind of gather, we can ask more questions to Ms. Eisenhower again later if we want to have her review that, but as of now, we have her checklist that she asked for in the email.
Yeah.
That was right here.
Right, which constitutes a complete application.
And I just want to interrupt, Mr. Nor, and I apologize. Don't answer the board's, please don't answer the board's questions to say that you agree. You, here on this side, don't ask Mr. Nor questions.
It's too tempting, I apologize.
Yeah, I understand. Focus on the witness. We need to, we need to move through this process. Thus why the courtroom manual said it is very difficult. So, you're going to hear it and move on, or sustain objections, and have Mr. Nor move on.
So, just amongst the board, I believe we should hear this information and keep it moving along.
Right.
And then we're going to have to use what we hear and determine whether we believe it is correct or not incorrect, and useful, not useful.
Right.
Is that okay? Otherwise, we're going to be here.
Michael, you said the same thing just a couple of minutes ago, exactly the same thing.
Okay.
So, that's what we-
Overruled. Mr. Nor, please proceed.
Ms. Bernstein, you said you applied the ordinances to what is submitted in order to determine completeness, correct?
Yes.
Section 54-35 is a, excuse me, 35 is a portion of the Woodfin ordinance, correct?
Yes.
The first complete sentence there says, "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
I think you just testified that Ms. Eisenhower had requested additional information from the applicant, correct?
Yes.
And that included the landscape plan, I think you said.
Correct.
And that's here, correct? RD 9. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is section 54-3.1, or excuse me, 318, a portion, that's a portion of the code as well, correct? That's the group development section?
Yes.
And I believe you were here last night, you were sitting next to me, you heard the testimony of Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower, correct?
We did.
And that the testimony was that the May application qualified as a group development, correct?
Objection.
The May?
The May 2021 application.
Objection. Ms. Eisenhower did not testify that to that expert, because her opinion that it was a permitted use, she testified to that multiple times, the May, the October, the December. She said they were all permitted uses.
Yeah, you can't rely on it.
And so, I'm not going to argue that.
Right.
Well, I can't rely on what you're saying.
I don't believe that it's a mischaracterization. I think I asked during my cross-examination of Ms. Eisenhower, we walked through the number of buildings, the definition of group development, and it was her testimony that it constituted one. I don't believe I've misrepresented anything.
This one, continue, or do we want to hear, or I guess I sustain and continue here? Or I guess I sustain and continue hearing?
He was, he was objecting to what, to a disagreement in what Ms. Eisenhower said yesterday, which I actually recalled it differently than he did. So unless we bring Ms. Eisenhower up to validate that, you know, because I, I remembered it, that she, she asked about type of houses. And so she couldn't make a determination yet, but it was good. I'm positive, okay, so...
I withdraw the question about Ms. Eisenhower's testimony, and as Mr. Goulden has said to you, you all have the obligation to recall what was said, and we have a record for that as well.
Okay.
Excuse me. In this context, three-one-eight, I think you testified that this section is part of the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if I'm reading it correctly, it says, "The procedure for approval of group development plan shall include the submission of a design plan." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
And then it further says, "The design plan package shall include approvals for the proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution systems from the appropriate state and local agencies." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So, again, I think your testimony was, you look at the ordinance and what it requires to be included, you look at the application and whether it has it, that's how you determine whether it is complete. Is that correct?
Yes.
When you reviewed the application, where did you find, or did you find sanitary sewer and water distribution approvals as part of the application package?
They were not provided.
May I ask a question? So in your experience, have you had site plans brought to planning boards, and not all the information has been there, but they have been granted site plan approval pending, supporting documents? They get, they get a pending, I'm trying to think of where we used to use for it. You had to have the other documents, or else it'll be void eventually.
Conditional?
Conditional, yes. Have you, have been conditional approvals? Thank you.
Based on turning in those, the...
Before construction starts.
Water and sewer, or landscaping, or things like that.
In my experience, we would try to get a plan as complete as, or a submittal to completeness prior to bringing it to a planning board. There are, it is, it is not uncommon to have a conditional approval that where you are going to be looking for minor clarifications or some supplementary information prior to issuance of that zoning approval. In my experience, that would be, you know, minor clarifications. If, if some detail was not expressly written correctly, but it was still, you know, complied with the code. Or if there's a requirement for non-invasive, native species, and there's some species on the landscape plan that are, you know, that are not, non-local. And so the conditions would be written, you know, prior to issuance of the zoning permit, these, these kind of clarifications or additional information would need to be provided. If, in my experience, if there's something that is expressly required in the ordinance, that would have to be provided prior to going to the planning board.
In this case, is a sanitary sewer or water approval, is that a minor clarification?
I would say no.
Okay. Is this something that you believe has to be, per the ordinance, has to be included in the design plan package?
Per the ordinance, this is required.
Moving forward, and that talks about completeness. Argument one. Completeness. Okay. Argument two. Failure to provide additional information. I wanna ask you some questions about that. I think we talked about it already a little bit. That's separate and apart. Failing to provide information is separate from whether something is complete, correct? Under the ordinance one forty-three, seven fifty-five that we threw up earlier.
Sustained, can you rephrase it?
I can rephrase that. Okay. In the context of providing additional information, maybe we'll just... Did you, in reviewing the application, come across any documents that requested additional information related to the May twenty-twenty-one application?
In the, reviewing the application?
Reviewing the record of decision?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Was that Ms. Adrian and Ms. Eisenhower? And again, I can ask, sometimes leading questions just help move things along, and I'm not trying to, I'm not feeding an answer, but is that Ms. Eisenhower's May seventeenth email that we've been discussing?
Yes.
Okay. Where she asked for the landscaping plan?
Yes.
Okay. When you reviewed the record, did you find where that landscaping plan had been provided in response to the request within six months of the request?
No.
One of the other arguments that we talk about is the request to put it on hold. Did you find after the May twenty-twenty-one application was submitted, a request to pull it off or keep it off of an agenda?
Yes.
Okay. And is that this document that's R eight?
Yes.
And that was from the developer's engineer to the town, correct?
Yes.
Okay. One of the questions that I asked Ms. Eisenhower yesterday was about a determination that was made in June of twenty-twenty-two. Is this one of the determinations you reviewed?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
And what is the time period being referenced in this determination?
This request, or the time period here is to base it to start January sixth. A request from January sixth.
Twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-two, yes.
So that's not the same as the period that you just testified about between May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, and November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, correct?
May eighteenth.
May, correct, May eighteenth.
Yes.
Different time period, different determination?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember seeing where the applicant asked to put their application on hold.
You're gonna have to ask a witness that, not a board member, if, if somebody wants to...
Into the book, yeah, I guess.
Could you ask a question?
Is this the, that document?
Yeah, this, this was in the, so asking not to be put on the next month's agenda is also saying we don't, we want our application to be put on hold. I, I read this as, please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back to you. So it's, it's not, it's, it's definite with the wording of that request.
Okay.
Is that also the same kind of basis that they used this determination on? And forgive me, Mr. Hanson, I have a question.
Would that be the same thing as saying, do no more work or consideration of this just because you've kept it off the agenda?
I don't think, I don't, I think this is just asking, don't put it on an agenda.
Okay, so, but if they're then doing more work or consideration of the application, would that be on hold?
I am not sure what work you, one would be doing on a project if, if you receive a request from the applicant to not put it on an agenda. You know, to me, that's a signal, let's press pause. So I wouldn't see any, any active work that I would need to necessarily be doing until I get a signal from the applicant, okay, we're, we're ready to go. But I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna speak to what, you know, would happen in, in Woodfin and what they would be doing, is the processing is the term that was used last night.
Thank you. I think that was, again, that was related to that hold request. I'd like to move on to our fourth argument.
Can I ask one more question? So in the, what's the name of this book that...
Record of Decision.
In the Record of Decision, after that last email that we just talked about, where they said, you know, wait until you hear from us, and that was on May eighteenth, do you remember what the next communication was from them? And I believe, well, I, do you have any recollection of what their next communication was?
I... I'm not sure about communication, just not being, not having it all memorized, if there were emails that went back and forth. But then, a lot of what we've talked about is the next plan or the next application, the next... What, that, when they, when they, the October, I don't know what the, what the number is.
Okay, the October thirteenth?
Yeah, I, yes. I guess that's RD eleven. Looks to be that, as far as this record, that's, that appears to be the, the next correspondence in the timeline.
Thank you. So we've talked about completeness, we've talked about failure to provide additional information that was requested, we've talked about the request to hold it off of the agenda.
Yeah.
The last argument that we highlighted for the board deals with whether this is a group development and, and the determination that it was instead multifamily. Okay, so I will ask you questions in that area. I'm gonna show you fifty-four dash two forty-nine. Okay, I think this was discussed multiple times yesterday by Ms. Tuck. This was the Mountain Village District section, correct?
Yes.
And under permitted uses as residential dwellings, comma, multifamily, correct?
Yes.
And, and I believe it was her testimony that she considered the October twenty-twenty-two application, the one that is, determination is being appealed on, to be a multifamily dwelling. That's what's in her, the issues that we, we are appealing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in determining whether that's actually multifamily dwellings, I've thrown up here for the board's benefit, definitions. Multifamily dwellings are defined as means a dwelling containing three or more dwelling units. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so is dwelling defined there as well?
It is.
You read that definition, please.
Dwelling means a detached building designed or used exclusively as a residence or sleeping place, but does not include boarding houses or lodging houses, motels, hotels, tents, or cabins.
Okay. So in order to be constituted dwelling, it is that definition except for the list of those four things, correct?
Yes.
Okay, does the code define boarding houses, lodging houses, motels, or hotels, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, it does not.
Okay. Are these some of the definitions you look to in the planner's dictionary to make that comparison?
Yes.
If I can here, this is exhibit seven point two. Can you read that definition for the board there?
Boarding house, see also lodging house, rooming house. A single-family dwelling where more than two, but fewer than six rooms are provided for lodging for definite periods of time. Meals may or may not be provided, but there is one common kitchen facility, no meals are provided to outside guests.
Okay, so that's one of the decision, definitions, and I wanna make sure the board has the entire. What were the other two definitions provided there?
An establishment with lodging for five or more persons where meals are regularly prepared and served for compensation, and where food is placed upon the table family style without service or ordering of individual person, portions from a menu.
And the last definition?
A building other than a hotel or motel where lodging or rooms, or both, are provided for compensation, whether directly or indirectly.
And the use that's proposed for this facility is, is, is what? Short-term rentals?
It, yes.
So that's the definition of boarding house. I wanna throw up definition now. Can you read the definition for hotel, please?
Hotel, see also extended stay hotel, motel. A building in which lodging is provided and offered to the public for compensation and which is open to transient guests and is not a rooming or boarding house as herein defined.
Another portion of the hotel definition, just so the board has that, can you read those, provide that? And, and let me go back, I don't think you read the bottom of the last one there.
Any building containing six or more guest rooms which are used, rented, or hired for sleeping purposes for transient guests and with access to units primarily from interior lobbies, courts, or halls. Will you keep going?
Yes, please.
A building in which lodging with or without meals is offered for compensation but not including kitchen facilities and in individual rooms.
And then the last one here, lodging house, can you read that for the board?
A building or place where lodging is provided or which is equipped regularly to provide lodging by pre-arrangement for definite periods, for compensation for three or more, but not exceeding twelve individuals, not open to transient guests, in contradistinction to hotels open to transients.
The second definition then.
A dwelling containing not more than one living unit where lodging with or without meals is provided for compensation to one or more persons, but not more than thirty persons at a time, at one time.
Based in those definition, based on those definitions, what if, what is your opinion about the use of short-term rental, one hundred and ten short-term rentals, and what that use will be defined as, considering that the use is not defined in the ordinance, and you have to interpret the ordinance to come up with that definition?
And I'm going to object again in your professional capacity and also to the fact that there is assuming evidence that's not in the records as far as what this is going to be used for, as Ms. Tuck testified, that was not provided at this stage, and so that's not even provided in the materials.
I, if I may respond, it is absolutely provided in the materials. I can pull the letter up right now that represents they're gonna use of the short-term rentals, if that'll help the board.
It doesn't say it's like a single-family home with for six people or transient use or anything like that.
My question was, it's being used as short-term rentals, are any of those definitions you just read instructive for you to determine what this use is?
Okay.
I believe she said, Ms. Tuck said yesterday, it was still unclear if they were going to use it.
My understanding was, my understanding was right now, it's not being listed as short-term rentals. And that may be something, depending on, another appeal may come in the future, but that's not what is listed right now. Am I misunderstanding it, or?
That's my recollection.
That's my recollection. I think so.
All right, so a motion is overruled?
No, if you don't want, yes, if you don't want to hear it, yes.
Okay.
Which it sounded like, I'm not telling you how to rule, but it sounded like you were going that way, you would sustain that objection.
Okay. Objection sustained, thank you.
I think there may be some question as to what Ms. Tuck testified, and I know it was late at night at that time. I'm showing RD one twenty-seven. Ms. Bernstein, can you read, this is the letter that was attached to the October two thousand and twenty-two application. Can you please read what was represented to the town when they submitted that?
While the landowner's plans for the dwelling units have not changed, it has removed any notes relating to short-term rentals from the revised master plan because that issue is not necessary to resolve for purposes to the planning board's promised ministerial review and approval of the application at its November first, twenty-twenty-two meeting. The landowner will address your October seven, twenty-twenty-two letter on short-term rentals separately from the planning board's approval of the application.
And since you were here last night, do you recall that when Ms. Tuck was presented with the same provision, that her testimony was that she had forgotten about this in a record of one hundred and seventy pages?
Yes.
And after reading this, her testimony was that they intended to use it as short-term rentals?
I don't remember exactly what she said, but yeah, but it was, it was brought to light.
Okay. So in the context of the applicant's letter, along with the application referencing short-term rentals, and the definitions that you just read, do you believe that this project as proposed falls into any of the definitions you just read?
I think it would, yes.
Sorry, just to object, just again, what I wanna do is stand your objection, that objection has to do with client for her... Sorry, just to object, just again, what I want to do is stand in objection, that objection has to be made for her professional ability. We don't believe she's qualified as an expert, so just want to put that out there.
All right, overruled, and continue.
You can answer, Ms. Bernstein.
I think you could apply, I think you could apply these lodging definitions.
Which ones in particular do you think are the most persuasive?
I just read a number of them, so they, they tend to come together.
Take your time, and I know you were reading it, sometimes when we're reading, we're not necessarily journalizing.
I think that in some of these, it's hard to make complete determinations since there's, there was, there's additional information that would be needed on the plans in order to determine what the layout and in, in the units is proposed to be. A lot of these definitions talk about kitchen facilities and there's no floor plans that have been provided with the plans.
Okay, some of the definitions don't refer to kitchen facilities and I think hotel in particular references transient rentals.
Sure.
How would short-term rentals compare or contrast to the definitions under hotel?
I'm not sure if I understand.
Looking at the short-term rental proposal, comparing it to the definitions of hotel that you have in front of you, would you find it to be consistent with that definition?
Yes.
Okay, and can you give some of the reasons why, explaining how they're similar to the board?
I think that some of these definitions for hotels talk about a building where lodging is provided and offered to the public for compensation, and, and that is what a short-term vacation rental does. And this proposal contains up to 128 short-term rental vacation units. So that seems to be a building in which lodging is provided.
Can I ask a question?
Those also we used as apartments.
I don't think, this, the definition doesn't say that it must be exclusively.
I was going to ask a similar question, actually. If, if, if this building, if this building had rooms in it that you rented on a annual basis or a yearly basis, we'd call it an apartment building typically. Was, what's the definition of an apartment building in your dictionary? I don't, I don't know if we have that page, but.
I believe that is in there as well.
It's not in this, I don't know if it's in this excerpt.
I'm just, I'm trying to.
Apartment is, that's on 7.3.
Okay, maybe it's called court apartment, but whatever a term might be for that. My question was if, if, you know, I'm trying to make sure I understand the ambiguities that there might be. If there's ambiguity around whether or not the intent is to use these as short-term rentals or not, depending on this last email. If they're not, and people are, are living in them, it sounds like an apartment building to me. And I, I don't know that an apartment building falls under the family dwelling or the, this primitive. So I just wanted your opinion on, on what an apartment building.
There is a, there is a definition in here for apartment building.
I don't think we have a page with the As.
It's under court apartment.
Court apartment, I believe.
So that's the only definition for apartment, is a court apartment?
I don't believe it's the only one, it was the other one that was defined in your ordinance, apartment courts.
Yeah, it, it, the question was, and, and please, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to do anything apartment. If it's, he asked, what's your definition of apartment? And Mr. Noor, I apologize, Mr. Noor said, it's under court apartment. That's not the question that was raised by the board member. And if you don't have apartment in there.
Either you have your own definition or you could turn to that page on the, the copy that's on that desk or the full copies.
I don't have my own definition ready to go.
Okay. Can we, can we ask for one from anyone who has a, the, are we allowed to ask for an additional page to be added to the thing that was handed to us earlier?
Well, I, no, no, you, you.
We started at B, I want to say.
It wasn't included.
Yeah, I don't think so, we're test, we're looking at those exhibits. I don't think you say, hey, witness, go out and grab something for me so you can answer my question. If she can't answer your question, she can't answer your question.
Now, but this court apartment courts is specifically referenced in the, in the code.
This is the question that had been asked.
Yes.
Want me to read that?
Sure.
Apartment is a room or suite of rooms with toilet and culinary accommodations used or designed for use as a residence by a family located in a building containing two or more such rooms or suites or located in a building devoted primarily to non-residential use.
Guess I'm confused as to how an apartment is non-residential.
Yeah.
Or.
So.
They're not permanent.
You could have an apartment in a building that's not a residential building, like an auto body shop and the apartment downstairs or a pizza.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So it could be a building of all dwellings or mixed.
And this specifies that it is designed for use as a residence by a family.
Okay, does it give a time, short-term, long-term?
I can pull the rest of that definition up if that would be helpful to the board.
A building or portion thereof designed for occupancy by three or more families living independently of each other.
So moving on, separate and apart from the dwelling, multifamily dwelling conversation, you also looked at the site plan that was provided as part of the October 2022 submission, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to just throw that up on the screen for you. And there were questions last night about how many buildings are here? How many buildings, can you tell, talk to the board about how many buildings you see and why?
Just for clarification, are you asking her personally, I ask you professionally?
I'm asking her professionally.
So we're going to object to that too, well, that she pointed an opinion that's, like, she's not an expert on this issue and she's not qualified to testify, how many buildings are here, she didn't participate in the design?
I, I believe Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower were asked the same question yesterday. I also think that she testified that she regularly reviews plans and determines whether they meet the ordinances. One of the aspects of your ordinance talks about the number of buildings. I'm asking her professionally, how many buildings she sees here and why? I think it's well within her expertise and, and she's able to talk about that.
In Ms. Tuck's testimony yesterday, I believe, was you have to rely on what's in the plan, is stated in the plan because professionals are licensed and could actually have, have, I think, a professional aspect of responsibility to tell what's there, it's in one building, so she relies on that.
That's her opinion, this is our opportunity to put on evidence that talks about how we would see that.
I'll listen to this one and take it under advisement. Okay, so overruled.
Because we heard Ms. Tuck's opinion, I'd like to hear her.
I'll restate the question. How many buildings do you see here on this site plan as part of the October 2022 application? And can you tell the board why?
Without additional information to clarify what's going on in this plan, like floor plans, elevations, showing the flow within the structures, I, I don't think that you can definitively say that it is one building. So we felt that it was multiple buildings.
And can you, and I can, okay.
Can you definitively say that it's more than one building?
We would need more information, I think, to, to, to understand what's going on. But, but when you, when we, when I, when I look at all of these plans and everything that's been provided, I felt like it was intended to be multiple buildings.
That was your, it sounds like that's your judge sense, but you can't state definitively it's one or the other.
So I, I guess I may add, so in your professional opinion, in your professional opinion, you would say you would need more information. In your personal opinion, you're saying you don't think it's one building? If I'm correct, understanding you?
I think that is correct.
Does that answer your question?
If you received this site plan as part of your job.
Yes.
And would, and it was intended to be three buildings, for example, would it be numbered one, two, and three typically?
I think there's a lot of information, clarifying information that's missing from these plans.
Can I, is part of your determination also related to comparing the August 2022 submission to the October submission and giving, and feeding into your conclusion that it's three buildings?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to throw both of those up if I can. On the right, we have the August submission, correct?
Correct, yes.
And on the left, we have the October submission.
Yes.
So when you saw the October and then looked at, excuse me, saw the August and looked at the October, what about that further made you believe that these were three buildings instead of one?
Objection, I believe she's already testified, she can't say definitively without more information whether it is three buildings.
She can't, her testimony, she can't say definitively, but she can tell you why she thinks it is. I mean, definitively would suggest. Hundred percent certain?
Let's sustain it and ask it differently because I'm having a hard time separating the professional and personal right in a second.
Fair enough. And I, I want to make sure that we keep, continue to try to do that for the board so that there isn't confusion on that. What about comparing these two applications made you think that the October was more than one building?
In between these two submittals, the correspondence received from the town was the applicant trying very hard to create a plan that would not fall under the town's determination of being a group development. So they knew if they needed to get to what the town was talking about, it's pulling together, appearing to pull together structures.
And what are these?
You, you said first that they would pull together, and then you said appearing to pull together. And I think that then leads toward a judgment call on your personal side, a suspicion?
As has been said, this is a unique, a unique position to be in. I, I don't want to say suspicion, but.
But you don't have evidence that they're trying to pull the fast one off of us.
I can't.
Are there two areas in particular, and maybe I'd like to ask a question to clarify the question the board member had.
I just want to make sure that she answers the questions before he starts asking.
Could you ask it again?
So you don't have, in that, and I, I'm getting to this from that word appearing or appearance. To me, that seems disingenuous from an applicant, if they're only trying to make it appear a certain way. As opposed to if we see a one on that design and one, two, three, four, five, et cetera, up through 12 on this one seeming to have buildings labeled, then maybe instead of just appearing, they're honestly trying to meet town regulations? Is that a possible?
I think that when, when an applicant looks, goes through the ordinance and the checklist and provides everything that is requested and required by the town, that's why we don't have to make those determinations. Because they would provide floor plans and elevations as, as required in the checklist, and then there's no guesswork.
When you say elevations, when, when you look at that plan, I, I was actually wondering if, if we see, you know, there's detached structures originally, and I see all of the contour lines of the elevation of that steep slope. And then you jam those together, isn't that going to break when it sits on? Maybe there's a fault line on there, somebody, no, the, in all seriousness, though, they, you know, these buildings, in, in your opinion, you know, you don't know whether they're one building or three buildings for probably a number of reasons, some being the original design. But then I didn't know if you had any meaning on, on the elevation or if you're talking about height of the building, but.
None of, and that, none of that's provided. So it's, it's impossible to use that type of information to make a qualified judgment in, in, in some of that plan review. We don't, we did, I, I didn't believe that, I could definitively say that it was one building.
Okay.
So we, so we can continue to move along here. So in your professional opinion, you do not have the proper information to determine if this is one building?
I believe it's multiple buildings, yeah.
But a few minutes ago, you said you don't have the proper information in your professional ability. In your professional opinion, I believe you said you do not have the information to determine that. Am I correct or did I misunderstand?
I don't, I don't believe they submitted everything that's required to.
But in your professional opinion, I believe you said in your professional opinion, you do not have enough information supplied to you to determine whether it's one building, two buildings, or multiple buildings. Is that correct? Did I repeat your statement, I believe?
In the absence of having all of that information, my conclusion was that it's multiple buildings.
But that, that wasn't really what I'm asking.
Okay.
I'm trying to separate this profession because I'm having a hard time with professional and personal. Because I believe that for the board's point, your personal opinion is you don't believe it's one building. But I think professionally, you stated already that in order to determine that, you would need more information. I don't want to keep rehashing this over and over and over, so I'm trying to get past this. Because we're kind of stuck on this one building, three building. I understand why you're doing, I get that. But in the professional opinion, I think we already stated that you don't have enough information to make that determination.
It, it's your duty to recall, and if she's not going to answer the question, then you can withdraw your question and it's your duty to recall.
I'll withdraw the question, okay.
Okay, I, I want to ask you a couple aspects about this. Can you, I'm identifying with a red laser here, these areas here to the left and then to the right of the central component of the project. What, in your professional opinion, do you believe those could be based on the lack of information that's been provided?
I think both speculation and again, there's also the.
Sustained.
Yeah, I would, I agree.
I want to summarize that again, so we, you know, the last argument, group development, talking about the number of buildings, number of dwelling units, short-term rentals. If I'm hearing your testimony correctly, your testimony was that you believe the short-term rental uses were consistent with hotel. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, which would mean that it is not a dwelling under the UDO, correct?
Yes. Yes.
If it's not a dwelling under the UDO, it can't be a multifamily dwelling, correct?
Correct.
And if it's not a multifamily dwelling, it's not a permitted use under the Mountain Village ordinance that we put up earlier, 54 to 59, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I also believe your testimony was that, in the context of the number of buildings, your personal view is that it is three, your professional view is that insufficient information has been provided to establish that it is one, or three, or two, or any number, any other number, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want to talk about some other things that, about CRLU and its work and how you all have worked in preparation for today. I think you had already, and we've already provided the articles of incorporation yet in the standing component of this. But one of those purposes is to provide educational opportunities to the public regarding the negative effects of high-density development on steep slopes in western North Carolina. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And as part of that, have you given presentations on behalf of CRLU related to aspects of this project through the different phases?
I, we, I have participated in, in a presentation.
In a presentation. I'm marking what is, I'm handing what's marked as exhibit 8.1.
Sorry. That's like, wow. How much longer, John?
It relates to this.
For the witness?
Yeah.
This would be also a logical space for a break after I get this.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Hand them up. And then, and then Mr. Portnoy, do you care if we take a 15-minute break? It's 7:15.
Can, okay. Can.
What was this? Can you repeat?
If I could just finish getting it in?
Yeah.
And then it sounds like.
There's no objection.
Can I ask a question?
Not if John, you cannot.
No, 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 she wants, she wants to ask the witness question.
A question of the witness.
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
You won't yell at me?
I'm going to if you were going to ask John a question.
Okay. You submitted something, an affidavit, and there are six points. The last point, it's, oh, it's 6.1. It's exhibit 6.1.
Yes.
And on the last point, you said additionally, upon information and belief, one of the lots composes the site, composing the site, is subject to restrictive covenants that my husband and I have the right to enforce on the owners of the Bernstein, of the owners of the Bernstein lot. What is that? What is the restrictive covenant? And I don't understand. I mean, you kind of threw that in here, but is there something that, that relates to part of this site that you can object to?
Yes, yes, we believe that there is.
What is it?
We don't have anything related in the record.
I could bring the deed up. Or I could bring those references up if you want when we come back, so you can ask that question.
Oh, okay.
Just so that we have something to refer to.
Sure. Okay.
That was a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Let's finish getting this into.
So, and I believe.
It's exhibit.
The response is there is no objection. Okay.
Okay, so if no, no objections from the board, then we're going to admit exhibit 8.1 through 8.24 into evidence for the Bernstein CRLU.
Thank you.
And then, did we say we wanted, this was the point we're going to stop or we're going to?
Yes. No, yes, I think we should probably.
Question.
No, yes.
Okay, so we're going to recess for 15 minutes. Well, let's make it till, by that clock, till 7:35. Give us 15 minutes.
Okay.
And as a group, I want to offer some advice.
Go on the conference room.
Board to the conference room. That's a good idea. Nice.
So you're going to a closed session?
I want to go back to that seat.
We don't really bite.
I want to go back to that seat.
Let me just do one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, come on, just me.
I'll test you. All night. Just as a habit because talking is.
For the, for those, for the deed references that are in there, I can blow them up on the screen and we can provide them.
I incorporated this portion into my software, I purchased it at the time. To have it as a professional recording software, it's not just, you know, anything. It's really incorporated to my software. And I did have, and code and everything, all these massive requirements and all this stuff. And I'm like, maybe this is a good time to incorporate, I'll just try it. And so I did. I, I used my writer too, you know, it's like, I can switch that, of course. But, well, there's codes and there's a lot of stuff. Like, if I did a reading and, and still know, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I don't quite understand one of those words. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I guess, sort of thing, for the combination of all sorts of things. So when I'm doing all the speakers, when they go into a Q and A session, I'm doing all of that. And then if they, if they slow down a little, I can grab punctuation and try to do that. I try to get as much as I can. Yeah, the whole thing is, is out there. Yeah, I'm like the whole, you know, thing, like my speakers and stuff, you can see. A couple of eyes here. They are. I've got somebody here, she can get something and I'm going to. First thing.
But I mean, what, what.
But I mean, what.
I am the boss. I'm here on here. I would like to.
I have a question.
But I know that there are lots of, I think there's a, a decision or something.
So there's a structure.
So I want to.
About the.
I incorporated this portion into my software, I purchased it at the time.
To have it as a professional recording software, it's not just, you know, anything. It's really incorporated to my software. And I did have, and code and everything, all these massive requirements and all this stuff. And I'm like, maybe this is a good time to incorporate, I'll just try it. And so I did. I, I used my writer too, you know, it's like, I can switch that, of course. But, well, there's codes and there's a lot of stuff. Like, if I did a reading and, and still know, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I don't quite understand one of those words. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I guess, sort of thing, for the combination of all sorts of things. So when I'm doing all the speakers, when they go into a Q and A session, I'm doing all of that. And then if they, if they slow down a little, I can grab punctuation and try to do that. I try to get as much as I can. Yeah, the whole thing is, is out there. Yeah, I'm like the whole, you know, thing, like my speakers and stuff, you can see. A couple of eyes here.
The first, I think the speakers are live.
They are. I've got somebody here, she can get something and I'm going to.
First thing.
But I mean, what, what.
But I mean, 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 what.
I like your, I like what it says on your, your container.
Oh, that's for my wi- that's my wife's.
Oh, well, it's nice.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like I heard the answer.
I had to turn it on.
They just, I think what they're worried about is.
I don't know. I can't say I get much from it, can't take a chance.
Oh, here. You said I could come, phone number.
Oh, okay.
Come toward the mill.
Yeah, I know, don't get all excited, it's no big fancy place, it's just an old, old mill.
That's my cell phone number, if you have time one day, let me know.
All right, I'll, thank you. I'm still trying to figure out what it did. And I believe that they were all, they explained to me they were all looms, all along, and then all this strings came up and they made fabric and stuff there. I think, I'm having a hard time researching, but it's a huge bill.
I think that I could introduce you to.
Glad nobody ever tore it down and it's still.
Was there water?
Well, there's a water pool around there.
Does anyone else need a bottle of water?
No, but you can have this one if you want it.
Are you not using it?
I brought water, so I'm still pretty full.
I want you to dehydrate it.
Mike, is that your pen or is it?
Not mine.
No, then it's mine. I was looking all over for it.
We need our board members, Scott, or not Scott. No, we're missing a board member.
Yeah, he's coming.
Mr. Tuck?
All right.
Okay, good.
And before you get started, when you open it up, I want to say I want to address the board.
Here, boys here, okay. Let's bring this meeting back to order, please.
All right, and before we get started, just briefly, witnesses haven't been called. I just want to remind this board in light of the length of the hearing, and it doesn't look like it's going to get finished tonight, I suspect. So we'll all, we'll have to consider February 9th, I believe it is. But in, to assist in the efficiency of this moving forward, we have to remember why we are here. This is the appeal of a determination made by Shannon Tuck, the interim planning director at the time. We have to look at the issues that are, this board needs to look at the issues that are addressed in that appeal. And so matters that fall outside of that appeal, whether or not someone thinks they are relevant or not, it is your duty to recall what that evidence is, how it applies to those matters that are in the appeal. And I only say that to that if there are matters that are irrelevant, we can, Mr. Chairman, you can move past those. But it's the, it's the appeal that we're here focusing on, not standing, that we, that we talked about yesterday, just the appeal. And I think Mr. Noor laid it out already as to what their issues are in that appeal.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I believe Ms. Bernstein has to come back up. Mr. Noor will continue.
Let me ask one question. There was, I believe, and maybe I missed it, I believe there was one document you said we were going to have before we came back?
Oh, the deed references.
I was, no, the book.
Introduction, introduction.
Introduction.
The introduction, yes.
But yeah, I don't care who inter- I think Mr. Portnoy said he was going to take the opportunity to introduce if he needed to, but Mr. Noor, you're welcome to do it.
Because it goes along with the purpose of the 7.1.
Thank you.
He was doing RD 154 and following is the attachment of the appeal.
Thank you.
Tax.
Yeah, those are the points.
Yeah, and following. John, I'll just number it.
Do you want to call, um, Exhibit 7.1 through?
I got you right, 7.8.
8, if you want to call this 7A.
Sure, that would be fine with me.
You want to go 7.0?
7A is, yeah, 7A.
Okay.
And are you going to do that now, Mr. Noor?
I, yes.
So this is the introduction in the reference material. Does the board have any objections to entering this in evidence? Okay, so this, this information will be entered in evidence as Exhibit 7A, I believe you said?
As an apple, yes.
As an apple, for the Bernstein C R L U.
Okay, I'm going to pick up, before we go into, what is it, Exhibit 8.1, I recall one more question I'd like to ask in general. We have the, the numbers here, but I'll represent to you, on the left is the May 2021 application, site plan overlay. And on the right is the October 2022 overlay. Ms. Bernstein, looking at the two, in your professional opinion, do you consider these to even be the same application?
I don't.
Why?
I, they are drastically materially different layouts with, with uses, both the uses as well as everything that you see, the access.
You say access, can we illustrate, or you can point out to the board what you were talking about there?
Oh, sure. In the, in the first middle from May, the access was provided as you're coming up Beaver Brook Road to continue and extend that right-of-way, that existing right-of-way into the site to provide the access. And then we end up with an entirely new lot that's not a part of the, this first middle that, that is used solely to provide a long driveway means of access to the site.
Was the additional lot here, is this the lot immediately across from your home?
Yes.
And if I'm hearing your testimony correctly, it was not even included in the original plan, correct?
It was not in the original plan.
There are other aspects which you believe make it a different application?
The original application didn't mention anything about short-term vacation rentals.
Okay.
And, and then, as they went along, they noted that that was what their intention was for the units.
So different uses at that point, introduced in the middle of, of the situation. I'd like to turn your attention to Exhibit 8.1 through 8.24. And I think where we had left off with that was that we were talking about the educational mission of C R L U and your role in presentation of some of those components. Could you identify what's in Exhibit 8.1 through 8.24?
This exhibit contains a copy of slides from a PowerPoint that was a part of a presentation that the C R L U gave at a meeting that was open to the membership and community.
And when you say that, were you the presenter?
I was one of the presenters.
Okay. I'm throwing that up on the board here. Can you talk about why you gave this presentation?
Primarily, well, first, one of the misstated purposes of the C R L U is to provide information. So that was something that this organization does through meetings in person, as well as through newsletters and the website.
Okay, and what was the purpose and specific of this app, of this presentation?
This was to try to get some information out to the affected community that this development application had been, it was being contemplated by the town.
And what did you base the presentation on?
We based the presentation on information that was submitted by the applicant to the town.
Okay, and so this was information they had provided, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so when you make components of the presentation, are you, are you saying these were your opinions? Or are you saying this was the information that was provided by the applicant?
This was information provided by the applicant and, and from the town, doing our best to provide, just to give the information that we were trying to receive and pass it along.
And you were relaying that information to the community?
Correct.
Essentially serving as a conduit to say, here's where we are, here's what we know. Would that be fair?
That is what we were trying to do.
Okay, and when was this presentation made?
It was August 30th, 2022.
Okay, so this would be before the October 2022 submission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you didn't have that information at that time, correct?
Correct.
Did you have the, I think we heard yesterday about, Ms. Eisenhower testified about an email chain where she had responded to you and attached a version of the code that you had requested?
Yes.
Is that, do you recall that?
I do.
Okay, and was that version of the code the correct version, at least, at least the version you'd requested, I guess is a better way to put it?
I found out last night that was not a valid version of the code.
Okay, so you thought it was, based on what she sent you, you learned last night it was not?
Correct.
And were you using that in this presentation?
That was the, yes, that was the information that we had.
Okay, so to the extent it references versions of the code, you were basing that on what you received from the town, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and again, not your opinions, what you'd been provided?
Correct.
Did this presentation have the benefit, I, I think we heard from, again, Dr. Finley and Mr. Roberson, and I'm not trying to get into their testimony, but had you all had the benefit necessarily of their complete reports and analysis at the time that you provided this?
No.
Okay, did that, those analyses inform your opinions after you received them? After you received Dr. Finley and Mr. Roberson's analyses, I, I'll withdraw that, let me ask in any way, just to be clear. You didn't have those when you were making these presentations?
No.
Okay, so they couldn't have informed the content of this?
We did not know who they were at that point.
And, you know, at that point, I think just a couple more questions about this. Is it common for C R L U to provide updates to its members through emails or other newsletters, et cetera?
Yes.
And do you use those again as conduits for transmitting information that you've all received?
Yes.
Okay. And I think those are my questions for Ms. Bernstein.
Good evening, Ms. Bernstein. Just have a few questions for you on cross-examination. I'm going to turn you first to your, it was Exhibit 4.1, which I believe is your resume. And so your most recent experience was what again?
City, city planner for the city of Asheville.
The city of Asheville. Ms. Tuck testified yesterday, she worked for a lengthy amount of time for the city of Asheville. Did you work with her?
I did.
What was your work relationship in terms of supervisory, was she your supervisor?
At times, yes.
At times, okay. And so you also were asked, Mr. Drun asked about finding difficult to resolve situations in, in the code and trying to find the best way to resolve those. And so I think you said there are some, you could, you'd run into difficulties trying to administer any code, is that right? I believe that was your testimony.
I'm not sure if I said it exactly that way.
Okay, well, just refresh my memory, how did, how did you say it?
That there.
How did you answer Mr. Drun's question?
And what was the question?
Regarding evaluating discrepancies and interpretations of.
That, that, that is not an uncommon thing to have happen.
Would you confer with other people in the planning department at that time? You ran into something hard to resolve?
Yes.
And would you have referred to Ms. Tuck?
Sure, yes.
So would you take direction from Ms. Tuck, particularly when she was your supervisor, about how to resolve a difficulty in the code?
I would.
So you didn't value your opinion about how to interpret the code over Ms. Tuck's?
I valued my opinion and, and my, but I, what, my supervisor is always going to have the.
You didn't consider your opinion to be superior to hers in some way?
In, in the, in the chain of command, anywhere, I think the supervisor gets the last say.
So is fair, is it fair to say you defer to her about how to finally resolve questions that you had about how to administer the code?
We collaborated quite a bit, but as I just stated, and supervisor gets to have the last word.
You've never had any job duty to interpret Woodfin's ordinances, is that correct?
I have not been employed to, to interpret Woodfin's ordinance.
And is it, do you find it to be significantly different than Asheville's?
I do. Not significantly, I'm sorry, if I, if you don't mind, I mean, zoning codes are not all that different. But I think that the city of Asheville has a, a greater number of sections and, and is more expansive than the code in Woodfin.
So for instance, does it flesh out what it means to have a complete application more than the code for Woodfin zoning ordinance?
I don't have the city of Asheville code here to refer to directly.
What did you find in, I mean, you testified that you reviewed the, the Woodfin zoning ordinance for purposes of determining your, your objections to, to this application. Did you find that it had more or less completion about what is a, a submitted application or a complete application?
I didn't compare the two codes when I was reviewing this code and, and these, these applications. I didn't put them side by side and, and look at what both said.
Turn it back to your resume for just one more question. City Planner 2 was your title?
Yes.
Were there others in the planning department that also had that designation?
Most recently, at the last few years, no, I was the, well, in my division, which did development review, that would be no.
Were there multiple folks who had the City Planner designation at all, is that part of your title?
I don't remember everyone's exact designation.
Were there other people in the department that also interpreted the zoning ordinances the way that you were required to?
Not in the same way, in the other divisions, the other planners in the other divisions.
There were other planners at the city employed?
Correct.
So there would be other folks that have the same, a similar job background as you, who might be as equally qualified to, to review an ordinance?
People, the other planners would do primarily, you know, long-term development. Or we had a section of folks that would do more like urban design. And then the division that I was in was large-scale, was development review, and larger scale development review. So they may have some similar titles or, or backgrounds, I don't have that information.
You testified fairly extensively about referring questions to planners dictionary. Does it have force of law to your understanding? Is it required that you refer to a planners dictionary?
It is not required.
And would you be permitted to refer to it and prefer its language over what's in a zoning ordinance?
If a term is defined in the ordinance, you go with the ordinance, but often when they're not defined, that would be a go-to reference.
Finally, I'm going to ask you, if you would, you should have in front of you what we've been referring to as the old ordinance, it says October 23rd, 2018 in front, and it's got a bookmark.
October 23rd, 2018, you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you would turn to page, so chapter 54 is marked in it, so if you would turn to page 54-15 at the bottom, I'm taking you to section 54-35, you want to bring it up?
Okay.
So I believe that Mr. Nor directed you to the end of that section. I'm going to ask you to read the first sentence of that section, please.
Of 54-35?
35, yes, please.
"No building, sign, or other structure shall be erected, moved, added to, or structurally altered until an application for a zoning compliance permit is approved by the zoning administrator, and a zoning compliant permit is issued."
Can you tell based on that language if everything that might be required for permit issuance is required to be submitted on, at the very first submission?
It doesn't say at the very first submission, it doesn't have that language.
Is there anything inappropriate based on that language in a zoning official who is trying to interpret that and get an application from initial application to permit issuance to have back and forth and tell a developer what else is needed and to receive those things? Let me ask it another way. In your experience, would you have, I think you testified, you'd have back and forth with a developer about what was lacking in an application and what else was required to make it complete?
Yes.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernstein, you would agree you have a pretty significant financial interest in the outcome of this case, is that correct?
Are you referring to the testimony from the witness for the appraiser?
It's in your affidavit, I believe, too, correct?
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm just asking if she has a financial interest in the outcome of this case based on her position that it would affect the value of a property?
We have stated that we would, my husband and I will suffer special damages if the proposed development were approved due to traffic safety issues and decreases in property value attributed to the proposed development.
So the answer would be yes?
Yes.
What professional organizations or associations are you a member of?
Currently, I'm not.
Okay. And what publications or research have you contributed to in the field that you were previously qualified to testify in?
No publications.
Have you ever served as an expert witness in the, at any point before today?
No.
When you were forming an opinion based on the determinations made by Ms. Tuck, did you take into account any of the conversations that may have occurred between the, between H.S. Robin Hood and the staff in the town of Woodfin?
I wasn't involved in the conversation.
So you would agree there could be information in those conversations that may change your opinions, correct?
I would have to see what was said.
And it could potentially change your opinion depending on what was said, correct?
If I sat in a room and heard new information, sure.
You've also testified that you've participated in presentations for CRLU, correct?
I have.
Okay. And we've already addressed one, which I'll get into a little more detail, but the August 30th community meeting at the Country Club of Asheville, correct?
Yes.
Do you participate in any other presentations on behalf of CRLU?
That, no.
So it's only one presentation that you've ever done on behalf of CRLU, is that correct?
That is correct.
Let's take a look at what was marked as exhibit 8.1 through 8.24. I just want to walk through some of those slides. Again, just establishing, that was on August, this presentation was made on August 30th, 2022?
It was.
And it's the second slide, so we're still on page one. It has a list of CRLU board members, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And one of those members is Ben Irvin, is that right?
Yes.
And that's Ben Irvin that Mr. Vincent was testifying about earlier today, correct?
He's the secretary of the CRLU.
And Alex Bernstein is also listed as a board member, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Mr. Bernstein is your husband?
He is.
If you can turn to, it's page 16, and then it would be slide 31. Are you there?
Yes.
Do you see in that slide where it says, "20 July 2022, after a meeting between town staff and two attorneys for the owner, the town revised its position and stated that the development application would remain valid until at least 11 August 2022." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Would you agree with me that that is in direct reference to what is in the Record of Decision under tab 19, marked as RD 079?
79?
079, yes, ma'am. 19.
That does match.
So you would agree with me that as of August 30th, both you, Mr. Bernstein, and CRLU were well aware of the determination made by Ms. Eisenhower that the May 17th, 2021 zoning application submitted by H.S. Robin Hood will remain valid at least until August 11th, 2022, correct?
I object to the mischaracterization of what the letter signifies. The letter says what it says. Ms. Eisenhower also testified that this had nothing to do with the appeals in this case, so that's the basis.
This deals with the application that is directly at issue in this case.
We believe Ms. Eisenhower's testimony is this dealt between January 6th and July 6th, so drawing a conclusion that somehow this is a combination that there was no-
If you could turn to, just to clarify for the record, and I think we can step back and confirm this, if you could turn to tab 17 of the Record of Decision, which is RD 068?
One second, so you still have an objection, Ms. Bernstein?
I'm going to withdraw, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Give it a little more basis to that, yeah.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so tab 17, RD 068. Do you see that, Ms. Bernstein?
I do see it.
And that is a letter from Ms. Eisenhower to H.S. Robin Hood owner actually saying that they believe the application, and it says, "on May 17th, 2021, is no longer valid", correct?
It says that the original, it says that the original development application was received on May 17th, and for the following, and following several revisions was put on hold on January 6th at the request of the applicant.
Correct. So this letter is dealing with the May 17th, 2021 application, correct?
Yes.
And then later on July 20th, Ms. Eisenhower retracted that position and actually said the application was not placed on-
I object to the testimony about retracting that assertion.
It's in the record, she says.
It says what it says. This is drawn a conclusion as to what that means, I think the work can be for itself.
We're trying to establish something here, but Ms. Eisenhower specifically said that after reviewing the record again, they changed their position and issued this July 20th letter in which they specifically stated that the application would remain valid at least until August 11th, 2022.
So I guess, are we trying to under, are you trying to explain what was in this letter, or are you trying to have a different intent at this point? I guess that's where I'm a little confused.
I'm trying to establish that this July 20th letter is directly related to the May 17th, 2021 application. And we see on the RD 068 that we have a letter where initially in July, Ms. Eisenhower said that the May 17th, 2021 zoning application was no longer valid, but then she changed that position on July 20th, saying it now is valid.
I think he's trying to talk about what that means, not what's in the letter. That's my objection.
Okay. Let's overrule, because I want to hear where we're going.
And I'm just trying to say, and Ms. Bernstein's already addressed the question that in their presentation, when they're referring to the July 20th decision that the town revised its position and stated that the development application would remain valid until at least 11 August 2022, Ms. Bernstein testified that that is in direct response to the letter that's in the record. And I was saying, and that letter is directly related to the May 17th, 2021 application.
This letter doesn't refer to May at all, though.
Reed, but that's my question, is if you go back in the record and look at the prior letter, Ms. Eisenhower says the application's no longer valid, and then a few, a week or so later, she then reissues the letter saying it is valid. So you can tell that that actually relates to the May 17th, 2021 application, correct?
I can tell that the letter in RD 68 refers specifically to the May application, but the letter RD 79 does not specifically refer to the May application.
And Mr. Portnoy, you were admitted pro hoc, Fiji, I don't know that Amy was. And so just, if you can-
Yeah, understood, though.
Okay, yeah. I just don't want her, I just don't want her practicing law in North Carolina.
No, 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 yeah, she wants it, yeah, yeah, she wants it. I'm sorry, because of that, I missed.
Where the client, just to make sure, where the client, our attorney has the right to speak with us, just as Mr. Norris spoke with his client.
That is correct, and I don't, I don't know, but she's also a licensed attorney, not in the state of North Carolina, and I don't know what those conversations are while he is directly examining a witness. And so if she is up here asking him, telling him what questions to ask, that would be the practice of law in North Carolina, and we can't have that.
Understood.
She can talk to her lawyer all she wants, but during direct examination or cross-examination of a witness, I-
And I believe, just to clarify, maybe this helps, up higher in that slide 31, you're actually talking about the timeline of events, and you're talking about the July 13th letter from Ms. Eisenhower where she said the May 17th application was null and void. And then you're now talking on July 20th about how the town revised its position, that's your language. The town revised its position and stated that the development application would remain valid until at least 11 of August 2022, correct?
The letter in RD 79 from Adrian states, "We are revising the town's position." So we were just putting the information that we received through public information requests between the developer and the town into this presentation in order to try to show the community what we could see was being said.
You understood, though, that Ms. Eisenhower is talking about the May 17th, 2021 application, though, didn't you?
It's not specifically referred to in this letter.
I understand, but I'm saying that you, I mean, you just testified you're an expert in this, understand that the July 20th, 2022 letter from Ms. Eisenhower is about the May 17th, 2021 application, correct?
I don't know that I can say that. I believe that there is confusion internally about, and from these, from the correspondence that would go back and forth as to what applications anyone was referring to. We believe that the May application is the initial application.
So you're saying you have no idea what this July 20th, 2222 letter is referring to?
I'm not saying that, but you're asking me what, you're asking me to say that this letter refers to, to, to May, May, March, to the original submittal. And I'm telling you that this, I'm just saying that this letter doesn't specifically refer to that.
Where else in the record, other than the July 13th communication from Ms. Eisenhower, is there anything about the May 17th application being null and void, or any application being null and void?
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, is there anywhere else in the record that you said you reviewed about an application being rendered null and void, other than the May 17th, 2021 application?
With this specifically saying null and void?
That's, that's your language in your presentation?
This presentation is not any sort of zoning, ad hoc zoning determination. This presentation is not done in any way to make judgments on what was said. This is just trying to relay to the best of our abilities as a, as a community group what we read and gleaned from emails and correspondence and plan sets.
I'm asking you-
And at that time, we, at the time that this is written, I don't have this full record to refer to.
Okay. As you have the full record now, though, is there anywhere other than that July 13th letter where there's any indication about the May 17th, 2021 application being null and void?
I think, I don't think I can answer that right now.
You said you've reviewed the record.
I did.
So as you-
I don't have it committed to memory.
So as you sit here, you, you can't point to any other situation where she may have rendered this, where Ms. Eisenhower is talking about rendering an application null and void, correct?
This, this July letter is- That July letter is, to the best of my knowledge, is the time when the town sent, made a determination to say that the application was null and void.
And then on July 20th, they specifically said, "After reviewing the, after reviewing the information shared and upon closer review of our records, we are revising the town's position regarding the status of the permit application for H.S. Robin Hood Owner LLC. To summarize, we agree the application was not placed on hold before February 11th, 2022. As a result, the application will remain valid at least until August 11th, 2022," correct?
That is what the letter says, yes.
And CRLU was aware of that letter by at least August 30th because they included it in their presentation, correct?
Uh, yes.
And did CRLU do anything to appeal the July 20th, 2022 letter?
No.
Did you do anything to appeal the July 20th, 2022 letter?
No. No.
Did Mr. Bernstein do anything to appeal the July 20th, 2022 letter?
No.
If you could turn to tab, not tab, I'm sorry, uh, slide 33, which is on page 17. Are you there?
Yes.
And did you give this portion of the presentation?
I did.
And that was based on your experience working in the planning staff with Asheville and the other background you've given?
Yeah, I think. Uh, this doesn't match with what the Asheville review process is, but I, I gave the presentation as someone who has some of that experience.
And that's a fair point. That's what I was asking. That, given your experience, you were asked to help with this presentation and this portion of the presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if I am reading this correctly, it says, project permissions roadmap simplified. Is that right?
Correct.
And then it says, one, Woodfin could grant a zoning compliance permit as ministerial review by the planning board, confirming that the proposed development is allowed, quote, by right, end quote, or conditional or special use, triggering a more intensive review with additional conditions and requirements possible, parentheses, but not looking likely, end parentheses. Is that correct?
That's what it says.
And that's your words, correct?
The, the board, is my words with the boards. We all edited the presentation together.
So you reviewed this slide before you actually presented it on August 30th?
Yes.
And you would agree with me, we've talked about the old ordinance and the new ordinance, correct, as you've sat here today, or sat here over the past few days?
We have.
You would agree with me that under what we call the new ordinance that's in place, there is only one way for any type of development in Mountain Village to get approved, and that's actually through a conditional use permit, through quasi judicial hearing, correct?
At the time that we put this presentation together, I still was operating off of a completely invalid ordinance. So at the time that this was written, I don't have the old ordinance or the new ordinance. This is
Now, you're saying invalid, but the portion of the ordinance that Ms. Eisenhower provided you was only a small section. It was only the Mountain Village section, correct?
The portion that she provided to me was only a small section, but she provided the same, she provided additional sections to, uh, to Ben Irving, and they were also from the ordinance that was then this incorrect ordinance.
What version did she provide to Mr. Irving?
The same that she provided to me. I don't.
And that's only the Mountain Village section is what I'm getting at, correct?
I know that, that in the information requests, there were additional sections that were provided.
You don't know for certain what those sections were, though, do you?
I don't have them in front of me.
But you would agree with me that under the current, or what we call the new ordinance, there is no potential for ministerial review, correct?
Uh, and the new ordinance? Uh, yes, there is, there is not one.
So when you're saying that conditional or special use is not looking likely, meaning ministerial review is likely, your position on August 30th was actually that the old version of the ordinance should apply?
This isn't, isn't necessarily a position. This is relaying information, and this is what your client believed was, was contending that the path was.
Where does it say that this is the position of HS Robinhood in here?
It's not specified that way. They, well, actually, we said in the, earlier in the, in the presentation that this, all this information is gleaned from public information requests.
Where on slide 33 does it say that this was provided by HS Robinhood owner?
On slide 33 itself?
Yeah.
It, it does not say that on slide 33.
Because this is a slide you prepared based on your experience as a town planner as to what the project permission roadmap would be, isn't it?
No, because we started the, the, uh, presentation by, by noting that this is information. And also, what's written on each slide, when, you know, when anyone's creating a PowerPoint, you put some information on a slide. You don't put your verbatim test, you know, what you're going to say, your verbatim presentation on a slide. So what you're reading here is just trying to condense information that we gleaned from your, from, from the public information requests to try to say, this is what we're seeing in these emails and these back and forths. We're seeing that they're looking, they're, they are contending that they're going to have this ministerial review. It all, we see a path for a conditional use, but by being a group development. These are two things that we see as review processes that are open when you look at these ordinances.
Can I ask a question about, so this presentation that your CR, the CRLU is giving to the public, right, or to the name
Right.
where it wants to go, what's the intent of that mean?
The intent was just to try to make sure that we could give information out to the community. These were, as stated in the purposes of the CRLU, education is, is one of those. And this, um, because none of, none of these notices, you know, we, first notice we got was the mailed, you know, there weren't a lot of, we got a mailed notice in, when the December submittal that came out to the, to the neighbors that were just around the site. And then it didn't go on a public, on a planning board meeting, hearing. So we have neighbors who are receiving notifications and don't understand what it is. And then we would, would request from the, from the town, when is this going to be placed on a hearing? And they said, we don't know. We haven't been told by the developer. So we've got a community that has the potential to be sincerely affected by a, by a development, and there's no information out there. So that's when we started to do public information requests to try to figure out what it, what it was, how, what it looked like, when it might come before the, the town, when public, the public might have an opportunity to come and speak about it and learn about it. So that's, that, I mean, that was really the purpose, to, to, to do our best as a, a community organization, to take that information and say, here's what we are think, here's what we think is happening based on this information that we've received.
Okay, yeah, that, that helps, actually. I'm trying to get an understanding of what the, the, the audience of these meetings was there for. And that clears it up a lot. You've got a neighborhood of people who are seeing, you know, white tags going on trees or something and saying what, and then letters in mailboxes, but not having, having information.
Absolutely.
And so that's, and, and I, I don't know whether some of these things are dated specifically based on, you know, what's valid at the time and things like that. I don't, I don't, uh, I, I see where your questions are coming from regarding, you know, what information is there. I, I, but I'm trying to translate to what the purpose of that was, and I, I don't know necessarily that, that was the intent of the level of accuracy. Okay.
Well, let's go on. It says, step two, Buncombe County issues permits for stormwater control and erosion control before any land disturbance can occur. Is that what it says?
It does.
Are you aware of any land disturbance permit that's requested in this case?
Uh, I, I don't have that information.
Is that a no?
Well, am I, I, I don't think I under, I'm not sure.
Are you aware of HS Robinhood actually submitting an application for a land disturbance permit?
No.
No, there is no land disturbance permit, correct?
I'm not aware of a land disturbance permit.
And you go on to say, these require detailed, detailed plans for clearing, grading roads, walls, landscaping, and all stormwater control measures. Post-construction runoff may not exceed pre-construction amounts for the one-year, 24-hour storm events, correct?
Yes.
And then right underneath it, you have a bullet that is italicized that says, review isn't typically initiated until after the project is approved by Woodfin, correct?
That's what it says.
Okay. That's not consistent with what you said was the process earlier, though, is it?
What, which statement that I said?
The review isn't typically initiated until after the project is approved. I believe your position was, uh, stormwater control and erosion control documents were required to be submitted with, with the initial application, correct?
I said that water and sewer.
Okay. Well, actually, that's step three, though, isn't it, in this case? It says, water and sewer plans must be approved by the Woodfin Water District and the Metro Poligyn Sewer District. And that's under step three, correct?
Uh, that's what it says, yeah.
Okay. And you don't have anything in this slide that suggests that's incorrect, do you?
There's nothing in this slide that suggests that's incorrect.
In fact, you didn't tell anyone during the presentation that that's an incorrect step process, did you?
This is put out, put forth as a, a typical review process that a project might go through, or some steps that, with, with some alternative steps, depending on review processes or review paths, such as in the first bullet.
And, but in there, you actually talk about what the typical practice of Woodfin is, correct?
I don't. I say Woodfin could grant a zoning compliant permit as either of these two review paths.
I'm talking about the bullet that's italicized under step two, where it says it's, it isn't typically initiated until after the project is approved by Woodfin.
It does say that. And again, this is just trying to give a, like a roadmap to the, a community of people who are not planning professionals, who are regular people, who are concerned about a development coming in and wanting to know what, what are the steps, what might happen here. And so this is a community group's best efforts at trying to say, here's how it often happens. This isn't saying this is how it is going to happen with this project at all, because that's not information that we had. We were not, did not know that.
But you are saying that as an expert, you can testify on that issue?
I was not participating in this presentation as a, as a sworn expert. I was participating in this as a
So I guess I'm trying to figure out then, then when are you an expert and when aren't you an expert? That's, I'm confused by that.
That's a good question.
I, I, I'm only, this is the only time I'm sworn to be an expert.
Are you an expert on the town of Woodfin code? You haven't worked in this town, right?
I think, I think each of these different, my guess would, is that you'd have a different definition for what qualifies an expert. This, where we are right now, has very specific definitions and qualifications for being considered an expert. That's quite different from a community meeting, trying to explain things to your neighbors and saying, I happen to have this experience. I've, my experience that's on the resume, and what I've done in my professional experience, in my career, is the same whether I'm in front of you all or I'm in front of my neighbors, but I'm not being qualified, I'm not being asked to be qualified in the same way at this meeting, especially at this point in the process of trying to understand all of these revisions and all of this information. So this is, again, just the person, when this is written, this is the person who happens to be a planner, trying to make the best sense out of a process and codes when we're getting incorrect codes and unclear information, and having to do this all through the public information requests, and not being, having the benefit of having any of these actual conversations to know what's going on, what's the intent, and what's the timeline. So that's, that's where this all comes from.
Would you agree with me that if there's ambiguity in provisions, North Carolina law requires you to interpret it in a way that favors the free use of land?
My objection is this exact same kind of question objected to me, asking about legal conclusions, but I think it gets to object to mine and keep him out of it. Ask her about the interpretation of North Carolina law and how it would apply.
I think I'd have to ask that, because otherwise I'm not given an opportunity to address information that has been allowed in. And I agree, we stand by our objection, but that's still, we still have to have an opportunity to cross her because she was able to testify in that role.
You didn't, you sustained the objection, kept me from asking this question. I'm asking you to sustain the same objection here and keep him from asking my legal conclusions.
He asked about the interpretation of codes and how she would do it if there was ambiguity. There was a specific discussion about, like, is it common if there's ambiguity and what you would do?
I've never asked about ambiguity. I, well, I never asked about ambiguity and free, uh, free application, the way the question was framed. That was not a question I asked.
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, mine was, she had testified that there's often ambiguities, I believe, in ordinances. And I said, one of the rules that you have to apply then where there's ambiguity is to apply a interpretation that favors a free use of land. Is that accurate?
Well, diagonal, don't answer it.
My objection is that he's asking for her to provide a legal opinion. That was the exact same kind of objection that he made, that you sustained, when I was asking questions related to statutes and case law. It's exactly what I'm hearing here. It wasn't good enough for my questions to come in. I'm saying, it shouldn't be good enough for his questions.
I understand that, but I think we overruled his objection and let you continue.
As to expert status, not interpreting law.
Can she answer the question?
It, it, again, it is entirely up to you. I, I, you all will have to recall whether the objection that was raised by Mr. Portnoy in her interpretation of the law of a particular case was sustained. And Mr. Portnoy asked the question two different ways, from what I heard, but you all have an opportunity to sustain the objection and not hear it, overrule the objection, and hear what her answer is. But, but it was two different, but it was two different questions.
If I recall, we, we, the, the, the case that was being
The Hush County
We, we just, we threw that whole question out because that was going to be a law interpretation of how that would apply. We, we were overruling him from stopping her from giving her professional opinion on, uh, how she would interpret the, the codes and, and, um, whether the, on the permitting process, the application process, right, that's what the city planner, so I don't, um, it, it, it's gonna, it's gonna fall kind of into one of those two categories. Is this city planner's skill set related, or is this interpretation of law lawyer skill set, right, which is outside of her expertise? So I, I think this falls into the latter, which is where the comparison to a, a previous case, whatever they call that statute, or that.
Do we need to hear this information?
What's that?
We would like to hear this information.
I don't know that she's
Qualified.
Qualified.
I could try to ask it differently, if that would help. I don't
All right. So let's sustain the, the objection, and please change your wording and try it differently.
Are you familiar with the rule that where there's ambiguity in ordinances, you are in, to interpret that ordinance in a way that favors the free use of land?
I'll object to that question. I'm going to identify it as a generic rule. We don't know what he's talking about, state law, code, I mean, where, what rule is he talking about?
Are you familiar with
Sustained. Just try to
Are you familiar with the law under North Carolina that says if there is ambiguity between ordinances or in an ordinance, it is to be interpreted in a manner that favors the free use of land?
I'll object again to what in North Carolina, what are we talking about? Now we're back to the Ash County case, throwing up a case that says something, asking what she
I think these are just markedly different. I'm asking if she's aware of that, not to interpret it or apply it to the facts or anything like that.
I think that's going to be the next question.
That's not, actually.
So if we overrule, then this gets shut down. We don't hear the information. Do we want to hear the information?
Does he need to give us what rules he's
Yeah. So Mr. Nor did give us some numbers, actual statutes, I will say, ordinances. Let's sustain your objection, and can you supply better information, more detailed information, which would satisfy Mr. Nor's concern?
It needs to satisfy your, your concerns.
Okay, I understand that, yes. But I mean, what, what is, what is this, where are you getting this information from?
I want to answer you. I just don't know if I can.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
That's, I'm sorry. I, I
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, don't, yeah, I apologize.
So, let me see how we're going to word this.
Uh, you don't have to word it anyway. You sustain the objection. Mr. Portnoy has an opportunity to ask a question.
I'll move on right now.
Introduction and all extra points on the books.
Ms. Bernstein, you testified that CRLU provides information through newsletters, correct?
Yes.
And are you familiar with CRLU's newsletters?
Yes.
Have you read them?
Yes.
And you're aware that they are currently on CRL And you're aware that they are currently on C R L U's website?
Uh, I, I haven't, uh, I haven't looked at the website for the newsletters because they come in through email.
I am going to pre-mark, I believe, exhibit seven.
Oh, yeah, I can look.
Yeah, yeah.
Exhibit seven.
Yep.
Step five. Yes.
Please take a moment to review that letter and let me know if you recognize it.
Do we have to enter this as evidence before she answers?
I do recognize it.
You do recognize it. And would you agree that this is a newsletter provided by C R L U to its members?
It is.
Okay, I'd, I'd move to admit it as exhibit seven into the record.
My objection is to be relevancy. I mean, I don't know how this has anything to do with three issues that are being appealed. If this newsletter to community members is not saying, I just have to do this, I have some terminations.
We haven't seen it, so I can't tell you what it is, but let's overrule because I'd like to see what, hear what this information is about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling to see how this isn't relevant.
Can you share a reserved ruling, like seen it in terms of whether it's entered into evidence or not?
Yeah, I believe yesterday it was, and Mr. Golden, I don't want to speak for you, but I believe we, it's authentic and then whether it's relevant then after it's submitted is up to the board.
That's what I said yesterday. The, the statement that I said yesterday is that if a foundation is laid and it's authenticated, the board can admit it and give it any weight that it wants, whether it's relevant or not.
Okay, so overruled and we will admit this. Any questions on the board? Are we okay with this to admit it?
And if the board wants to... I was gonna say if the board wanted to vote on it, but that's fine.
I think we're okay. So this is property owners exhibit number seven? We admit it in the evidence.
Thank you. Ms. Bernstein, you would agree that this newsletter is directly related to the October 18th, 2022 revised site plan provided by H S Robinhood, correct?
Yes.
And in this newsletter, C R L U took a snapshot or I don't know, I guess cut out the actual image that's on the October 18th, 2022 revised site plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's read what C R, C R L U had to say about that. If you turn to page two, it says, "The developer has changed their proposal yet again in order to keep the ministerial review path." I want to stop there. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
You would agree with me that, again, under the new version that you guys are arguing applies, there is no ministerial review path, correct?
This is based on the taking from the information that we received from public information requests. This is, this led, this newsletter was not written by way of a zoning analysis, a zoning ordinance analysis. This is directly from these letters that we got from the town, talking about your desire to keep to a ministerial review path and Miss Tuck's assertion that that would be done by consolidating...
My question was simply, under the new version of the ordinance, there is no ministerial path, correct?
Again, I'm, I'm talk-
It's a yes or no question. I'm just trying to confirm a fact. Under the new version of the ordinance, there is no ministerial path, correct?
I'll just object. This question's been asked and answered before, so it's a way of, I don't know whether it means rehash.
I'm gonna say overrule because I think this could pertain to what's going on here. This is bringing back to the tension that, we want to hear her answer once again. Please.
The, the determinations would be made with the, that, that it would be a, a group development, not a, that which would go through a, a conditional use review. And that was what Mountain Village Projects would do.
That's, that's not answering my question, though. My question is still just, under the new version of the ordinance, there is no ministerial path, correct?
I'm, I'm just gonna look at it again. There's not a ministerial review path.
All right, and it goes on to say, going to the next full sentence. Now they are showing one very large building with up to 110 units and up to 165 spaces in three tiered surface lots, correct?
That's what it says.
And the word "one" is in all capital letters?
Yes.
There's nothing in here that says C R L U disagrees that it's one building, is there?
That wasn't the intent of the newsletter, so no.
You don't think that the members would be interested to know if C R L U agreed or disagreed with that statement?
That wasn't the purpose for these newsletters. These newsletters were just to try to relay information that we gleaned from the public information requests to the community to show what the developer was intending to do and what the town was saying that they could do.
Is, is the, is the intent to not only give that awareness, but also to raise money and support? Looks like that's the next section.
Yes.
I have a question. Earlier, you disputed that that was one building in the drawing on the plan, but here it's, you're saying that it is one very large building.
This is a, the C R L U, this is like this hats thing again. So this is something that came from the C R L U, and I'm talking about it as someone who's authorized to speak for the C R L U. So noth- nothing that, that the, the C R L U was, was simply trying to set, show what the developer was proposing so that, and what the town was, how the town was responding to that and, and not, you know, I think that in general, when it's a neighborhood, a community organization, trying to understand development review processes, it's confusing enough. So the point of what the, the C R L U was trying to do was simply to, to, to pass this information along and do their best to educate non-planning people about what's going on and what, what's being submitted by the town. The intent of these newsletters was not to have me do, you know, a, a complex analysis to try to then give that out to the community. It's just, the, the intent of these is just to say, the town submitted something. This is what, how the town characterizes what they've submitted. Here's a, here's a snapshot of what's on the plan.
So you don't, you don't type this up? This was somebody else's words?
C R, C R L U's board members typed this up, though, correct?
Uh, yes.
And just, see that, I believe that was October 23rd, 2022, when that, that newsletter went out, correct? If you go to...
It doesn't have a date on it.
You would agree it has to be after October 18th, right?
Sure.
And then by October 28th, C R L U was taking the position that it actually is three buildings connected by bridgeways, correct?
Yes. But this is just, again, trying to say, this is what the developer has submitted and what they're saying and how the town is responding to it. It is not saying, giving any analysis. That's some, that wasn't the point or the purpose for these communications.
I'm sorry, can you tell me what the date of this newsletter was again, please?
I didn't know that. I think it, it doesn't say on here.
I don't think it says, but it, my question to her was just, it was after October 18th because October 18th was the date that that plan was submitted.
Right. After the 18th and before November 1st.
Which, which year?
2022.
Okay, I just gotta clarify. We had... Thank you.
And I had a question about that. So earlier, we were hearing about times that you have to submit an appeal after, so this is, the plan was the 1018 plan. The sub, the submittal or the approval of the town was on what date?
The letter that we appealed was on September 30th.
September 30th?
Yes.
Okay, so we're within the time of appeal?
And our appeal was the October 28th, 2022.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was within the 30 days, so it was, okay.
I'm going to hand to you as being marked as exhibit eight. Take a moment and let me know once you've had a chance to review that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm just letting her review it, so.
Just watching.
Yeah, no, I am, awesome.
Okay.
All right, do you recognize this document?
Yes.
All right, and would you agree with me that this is dated as a July 31st, 2000, or 2022 newsletter by C R L U?
It is.
I would ask to move this in, to admit this into the record.
Since the C R L U has standing, I guess we should look at the newsletter.
Right, right.
Mr. Chair, we agree you're admitting it?
I'm just gonna look at it real quick to make sure we're good. Does anybody on the board have any questions on it?
Yeah, I think a board member down here said the C R L U was granted standing.
So then, yes, we will agree to admit this as property owners.
Exhibit eight.
Number eight will be admitted as evidence.
Thank you. And I'd just ask you to look about three lines down, four lines down into the second full paragraph. And do you see where it says, "While the town had originally planned to rezone all the contiguous Mountain Village parcels on the Robinhood side of the, side of Elk Mountain, they removed the two properties off of Beaverbrook Road that we are concerned about after discussions with the developer. Apparently, the town initially determined that the development application had lapsed, but has since recognized that it remains active." Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, and this is dated July 31st, 2022?
Yes.
Okay, and it, am I correct that that is in reference to the letters we, I think, initially talked about that from Ms. Eisenhower where they initially, Ms. Eisenhower initially said the application was invalid and then the July 20th where she says the application is valid, correct?
Correct.
And then it goes on to start the very last sentence of that page, I guess, third paragraph. It says, "C R L U has retained legal counsel." Do you see that?
Yes.
So by July 31st, 2022, C R L U had legal counsel, correct?
Yes.
And it was aware of the July 20th, 22 letter from Ms., or determination made by Ms. Eisenhower that the application will remain valid, correct?
I'll object to what, if referring to legal counsel, I don't think she testifies to this in someone else's mind. It also calls into question communications between attorney and client as to what the exchange between the two, and that's not, can't be admitted under any circumstances.
I, I believe my question was simply, they had retained legal counsel and that C R L U was aware of the determination as of July 31st, 2022, that Ms. Eisenhower made and that set forth in the July 20th, 22 letter. There's nothing about what they talked, what legal counsel talked about. It's just two separate facts.
I just disagree with what it was referring to, so I'll draw the objection to C R L U.
Can you ask your question again?
Yeah, sorry. We just established that as of July 31st, C R L U had legal counsel.
Yes.
And we are, we have established now that as of July 31st, 2022, C R L U was also aware of the July 20th, 2022 determination made by Ms. Eisenhower that the application will remain valid, correct?
Yes.
And C R L U did not appeal that decision, correct?
Correct.
Can you, can you appeal, wait, what were you asking? That they didn't appeal what? What did he ask you? That you didn't appeal what?
Didn't, he asked if, to confirm that we did not appeal the letter that's RD 79, the July 20th letter from Adrian stating that they regre, they agree the application was not placed on hold before February and the application will remain valid.
I don't know the appeal process. So you, so the appeal that you did place was a, was an appeal to the decision made for the approval of the application?
The appeal that we placed was based on a determination that was made by Ms. Tuck in, in September 30th. So a different, a different letter with different determinations involved in it is what we appealed, not this letter. So I was just saying, yes, we did not.
I just didn't know if there was a, so you'd have to, you would, is it a public record or something that you can see? You know, the, I've only seen the email from Ms. Eisenhower that said, "We take that back." It was, it was not actually canceled. So is that what you're asking, or is that what he asked you if you appealed that email?
Yeah, I mean, that's all we saw too, were those emails. So, yes, we did not appeal that, that July 20th letter.
Yeah, and I, I apologize. There was use of email. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. The, that we're talking about RD 079 in the record of decision, correct?
Is that the letter that you were referring to?
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's the letter I'm referring to. Is that what you did want outside?
When I say email, it's because we got all of this through our public information requests and not a letter, so it, I don't know.
I'm mixing them up, too. I don't know which of the, I keep thinking these are all emails printed out in this book and they're, they're not necessarily. So this, that was what I was referring to.
So I'm still confused with the answer of questions. So to the, to the attorney's question, you did not appeal the RD 079 letter?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
I want to be clear.
Yes.
I'm going to move on. I just want to make sure, is that, I'm going, exhibit number nine. And ask you to do the same thing. If you could just review- And ask you to do the same thing, if you could just review that and let me know once you've done so.
Do you have a date for this one, just in case that comes up? It may not come up. Oh, okay, sorry.
Agree. Sustain.
Agree.
Okay.
Do you recognize this document as a newsletter issued by C R L U?
We do.
At this time, I'd move to admit this into, as, into the record as exhibit 9.
Do we need to know the date of this letter?
So I'm just about to address some.
It says, references Labor Day.
One minute, please, we have not reviewed this, everybody review this, any questions on the board?
Yep.
Okay, so, yes, we are going to enter this into evidence as property owners exhibit number 9.
And Ms. Bernstein, I think you were kinda getting where I was going, there's no hard date on this, right?
There's not a hard date.
But there are some indicators as to maybe when it was issued, right?
Sure.
So we start off by saying, thanks to so many of you, we had such a positive response from our community meeting on August 30th, correct?
Yes.
So we know that it was after the August 30th, 2022 community meeting, and then if we actually go to the end of it, it says, have a relaxing Labor Day weekend, correct?
It does.
So it's sometime between August 30th and Labor Day weekend of 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you would agree that's sometime probably during the first week of September? Is that accurate?
I would object, except to the extent she knows, to the cause of speculation, otherwise
It's Labor Day always, is that a fixed holiday?
So.
My objection is to the cause of speculation, unless she knows that they.
Sustain, can you please rephrase the question, get a more direct answer?
I guess we could all agree that this is between August 30th and Labor Day, September 20, or in 2022, correct?
I agree, yes.
And I think we eventually could probably take, I don't know how it works here, actually, Mr. Golden, but usually can take judicial notice of.
The calendar.
Yeah, the calendar.
I don't think we should admit the calendar.
We aren't admitting.
Which calendar?
All right, I just have a few questions right now. It says, in the start of the third paragraph, to that question, we are firming up plans for the legal campaign, correct?
It does say that.
And at that time, I guess, would you agree with me that Labor Day was well before September 28th, 2022?
Yes.
So at the time C R L U was firming up its legal campaign, the determination issued by Ms. Tuck that's at the issue of appeal had not actually existed?
Correct.
So really, regardless of whether Ms. Tuck issued that letter or not, C R L U was going to engage in a legal campaign against the project, is that fair to say?
As it was stated in the purposes of the organization, that is something that the C R L U holds as a possible, a possibility for the group, is to use legal means to engage.
To prevent development.
There's also, there's a statement in there about ameliorating the effects of development, so it's not solely to prevent development, it's that when a development occurs, to make sure that, to attempt to ameliorate, you know, to help work towards mitigating factors that can lessen the impacts of a development in these environmentally sensitive areas.
What does, what does C R L U stand for?
Citizens for Responsible Land Use.
Citizens for Responsible.
Citizens for Responsible Land Use.
I'm going to just take a few minutes if possible, look through my questions and talk with my client if that's okay.
Sure.
So we're just looking at the time, so where do we stand on your, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't anticipate like a whole thing like we just did, I just need to confer with my client, so. I don't know if it makes sense if, I don't know if Mr. Henning has any other questions to, or if the board has questions while I do that.
Okay.
We can play some music in the background.
Right, they have, they have not, John, I don't know so many, I think this is John's only witness, the property owners hasn't called up, haven't called it in.
Just from the evidence side, looking at so far.
Yeah, mics are hot.
Mr. Chairperson, I'm holding responsible for mismanagement of the time, since it's gonna be past nine, two minutes.
And our attorney promised us we would.
I tried to.
I was just wondering, what's everybody doing tomorrow?
Call me and ask me.
Let's just kick it out.
We charge a very high rate for Saturdays.
Yeah, you get your double rate, right? Time and a half on Saturdays.
Now, on Sundays, I'm coming for double time.
Jury's still out whether I like him.
It's all right. I have thick skin, I've learned to check my feelings at the door when I walk in, so.
Okay.
All right.
Go for it.
Oh, we're back. Are you guys good to go? No, it's good, you're, you're good to go? Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Okay, then you can proceed. Mr. Portnoy.
Portnoy.
Portnoy, sorry.
I wanna turn back to the, we'll call it the October newsletter.
Exhibit.
Oh, sorry, it must be.
Seven?
No.
Eight, seven.
I didn't have a sticker or anything?
It's that one, yeah, the one from October with the single building. I just wanted, you would agree with me that in none of the documents in the record of decision that you reviewed, does it, does H S Robin Hood say, this is, in all caps, one very large building anywhere, does it? One very large building?
I, I would have to read back through to look for that specific wording.
Yeah, the, the very large is C R, C R L U's interpretation, isn't it?
Yes.
This is C R L U's words in this newsletter, correct?
Yeah, looking back at the other plans that showed lots of little buildings, this looks like one, this looks like a large, this is a larger.
Exactly, it's C R L U's interpretation, correct?
Well, the communication between the developer and the town also got, was very specific about what you need to do to get to this, to stick to a ministerial review path, and that was to make one building. So I, I would say that the large, very large is the editorializing by the C R L U.
And can we put up 54-35 again? And I believe you talked about this before, I wanna draw your attention to, I guess it's three lines up from the, from the top of that first page, where it says, "All applications for a zoning compliance permit shall be accompanied by two sets of plans showing the dimensions and shade of the parcel to be built upon, the exact sizes, uses, and location of the parcel and buildings already existing, if any, and the locations and dimensions of the proposed building or alterations," correct?
It does.
It doesn't say anything else has to be on the site plan, correct?
This doesn't say specifically what's on a site plan, it just says, "All applications for a zoning compliant permit shall be accompanied by two sets of plans."
Right, the plans are the site plans.
Okay, well, we, yeah, sure.
And then it goes on to just say, "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of," it says, "this article," correct?
It does say that.
In this article, if we scroll back up, we went through this yesterday, is Article 2 Administration, correct?
It is.
The Mountain Village ordinance is not contained within this article, is it?
It is not.
That's all I have.
Do we have any concerns from the other attorneys if we break at this point in time?
I fear that I won't, I, I may like to hear the.
Well, you can stay.
Well, we, and, and the idea is, I know Jason back there is, is.
Right.
I was just adding consideration for him, he's gotta be out of town.
Exactly.
That's right.
All right, so at this point, we are going to recess, correct?
Yes, until February 9th, I think that was.
Do we agree to that?
We do have one administrative question, and Mr. Golden, you were involved in this as well.
Okay.
We had, as I mentioned before, agreed to provide briefs for board members before this process, so it was adjusted by the petitioners, we put that off until the evidence was in the record, I believe that evidence is now in the record, so we would suggest that the parties would be able, both parties would be able to provide their respective briefs, and that may help to provide some additional information to the board.
So, yeah, and what, what I would say is, I would love it if, on the one time that you both agreed on an objection, it was very easy, if you all four could go talk and see if you could agree on allowing me to do it. My, my, my decision was, somebody raised an objection to the introduction of, of y'all's brief, and so nobody's brief went in, if you all could go, yeah, most of the evidence has been in, I don't wanna make that determination, but if you guys could agree to it, I would love for them to have that information, because it was supposed to go in early, so if you guys could take two minutes.
What's contained in a brief?
So you want us to hold off the adjournment yet?
Yeah, yes, just to see.
So what's a brief?
In a brief generally is each party's legal argument.
I'm sorry.
Do I have to be discussing?
Your excuse, I'm sorry.
And opposing the position.
Okay.
Like a summary or?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a summary with supporting legal documents and attachments, and the idea was, we were going to, along with the record of decision, we were gonna push that out to you guys before.
Yeah.
This, the hearing, so that you guys could have a look at it. There was an objection because some of the evidence that was alluded to in one of the briefs hadn't been introduced yet. Mr. Portnoy said he thinks he has to win. I can't make that decision.
And so, for example, when, when Mr. Nor was showing his PowerPoint that was outlining his argument as he was going through, it would be a paper version of that?
Correct. Yeah, no, we're not looking at it. I made another one because someone took it with them.
Tick tock, tick tock. I know. Watching the clock.
Scott, are you a night person?
Once upon a time, I was a night person. My bedtime's about nine o'clock. I'm overdue. I have approximately 100 words to go. If I didn't have a Prius, I would walk.
That's cute.
Mics are hot.
Yeah, that's fine, we're talking just crap.
So we're gonna get in a couple, just a couple minutes, we have to remember, Mr. Chairman.
I'll have to get a motion to.
Ms. Bernstein was on the stand, and it was redirect from Mr. Nor.
Yeah, we should write that down. Okay. Bernstein's still up there, and Nor's redirect.
And, and if I could ask all of you to look, 'cause my belief is, February 9th isn't gonna be enough to accomplish this, so.
You don't say.
If you could communicate, if you could communicate with maybe Shannon or Ricky on scheduling, that they could get it out to me. Shannon, just 'cause we're gonna need another day.
So the 9th is a Thursday, the 10th is a Friday, so I don't know if we wanna continue this Friday stuff.
Wrap it up that week?
We can, yeah, I don't, I don't really have a problem.
I'm available that day.
I wonder if we can go 8th, 9th, I, no, I don't think they were available until the 9th is what we said, I thought.
Somebody wasn't.
Because it's still prior to that?
They're making trips south or west.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, oh, they said that they don't get back until they, I mean, we actually have dates on the 30th and 31st, but no one else is available.
Right.
Right, yeah, those, those are for nothing now, they're.
Those are for nothing now, end dates in between now and the 9th.
So is that officially?
And the 8th was not?
They aren't back in town, so no, yeah, they're not available.
Yeah, two folks had, two folks had conflicts on those dates that arose after they were confirmed.
All right, so officially, I guess I'm gonna ask, the 30th and 31st, we do not show up?
Correct.
Okay, just confirming.
But then, I always wanted to confirm, they're not available.
My bedtime's not till one or two in the morning, so.
Are you not out?
No, I have to deal with the other side of the world. I used to, I used to get up at 4:30 every day for 35 years.
Did you really?
Worked for electric utilities, so I had to, and it's rings. Yeah, 'cause I was at work by 6, so, and I didn't get home till whenever, but you have to keep the lights on.
Oh, yeah.
I understand.
I understand.
So we're here. We're just up here.
I know that little ace card where.
Ace standing there? She was upstairs from that.
Oh, okay.
And we live.
Were you doing a tour? Someone should have gone out there with the attorneys to make sure that they, that they're behaving, that they're continuing.
Right.
Standards.
Have you been, have you been writing down the exhibit number?
Yeah, yeah, I have.
Do you know what exhibit number this is?
And I've been writing.
Four. This is four, okay. It's the, the, the letter. Joseph Martin of.
Right.
Exhibit four, all right. Thank you.
And Lisa, I will electronically upload these, not tomorrow or Sunday.
Right.
Might not get them on Monday. I will electronically upload them and you'll have them next week. Because I'm assuming each reporter will do their own part and have their own exhibits in a. Okay. Yeah, perfect. Do you, will you communicate with QSB that we need another reporter for the? Not a Friday.
Hey, Brian, so we get all done? All of our documents and all the stuff? We can put them in our records, our file, where do we have to turn this back in to get destroyed?
Most people don't want to keep them.
Yeah.
And so they let us recycle or whatever.
Okay, I mean, they don't have to be, they don't have to be turned in as part of evidence, is what I'm asking.
Uh, no, that's what I've got here.
Okay.
I've got the official record that will go.
Thank you. Just want to make sure.
Shred it.
Yeah, when you're done. I'm like days off now, read the 177.
Yeah, I want more dogs. I love dogs.
What kind is yours?
She's a little poodle mix. I'm not sure exactly what she's.
I had a.
That's after appreciation.
What do you have? Do you have a dog?
No, well, I, yeah, we have a dachshund, but in my old life, before I came down here, I had a.
A bigger one?
Golden doodle.
Oh, they're big.
No, well, they could be either a bine.
Well, let's see.
John, you got, look similar to that. I kept it cut. I didn't.
She's the 12 pound version of it. That's what she looked before her haircut.
That's how mine would get before I had to cut it.
And then, yes, and then.
It's actually the smartest dog.
This is after the haircut.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Took mine to different places. One time I shaved it down shorter than that. One time it came back looking like a total poodle with the little ball in its tail and stuff. And that looks totally different there.
Turner's not as curly when it gets longer.
What's your name? Gabby?
And it's appropriate because she's.
I have two can terriers. Well, now that I'm older, I like little dogs. Oh, God, they're wonderful.
Cats, dogs, and three horses.
You have horses?
Three of them.
Yeah. And river?
No, uh, no, we keep them down. What's it called now? Mills River. River Milk?
Away, it's away?
It's, it's an hour, 45 minutes to an hour away, but.
It's not Mills River?
Mills River, no.
So you don't see it?
We had them in Mills River, but then the barn got sold. Mill Spring.
Oh, Mill Spring, yeah. That's even further south.
Yeah, it's not a, it's a, actually, it doesn't get a whole lot longer to get to Mills River than it does to Mill Spring. It's a little, but not much.
Because of the waters you take, yeah.
And then again, that's based upon 26.
Is it near the Tri-.
Not far from there. Because actually I was visiting that for the first time a few weeks ago.
Yes, this indicative of lawyers that when we say two minutes, you think we mean 15?
Yes, it is. They're right out in the hall though, so they shouldn't be.
I have learned a lot about lawyers.
Mr. Chair, we.
Likes your life.
I don't care who knows.
You tell them two minutes, they take fifteen.
Yeah.
It's why ahead of time I was announcing that we want to find a common, a, a, a good spot to break.
Maybe outside and at the end of the building, behind the. We were here till 9:45 last night.
Yeah.
Personally, I think they use too many words. There's a lot, a lot that you could say without too many words.
All right, hold up. Can we have order, please? Can we have order in the courtroom, please? Courtroom, meeting room. This meeting.
We actually are agreeing on something.
Just get it over with.
And, and that is that at this point, the objection that I've made to you getting the brief was essentially saying, well, you shouldn't get the brief. And so all of the information that's referenced in the brief has been entered into the record and authenticated. We know what it is. And that's been verified. That now has happened with the exception of one thing which we have agreed we can figure out when we come back on the line. And we're happy to be able to have, as soon as Mr. Goldman is, you know, we can provide the brief.
Delighted that you all agreed outside of here.
The only request I would have is that you just advise the board on what they're supposed to be doing outside of session and not supposed to be doing with information so that they have a clear understanding of what they can and can't do with this stuff.
Yeah, perfect. Do you have your briefs?
We do, actually. I didn't know if you were going to do electronic, but we do.
I'm happy to do electronic if you all want it.
Oh, it's now?
I didn't know we were getting them tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
That's why we're. That's not, that's not.
We're just trying to make sure that.
That's just.
That is the record of decision or brief and the procedural stipulations. That is not.
Do you have one more notebook?
And no independent investigations.
Are we allowed to read these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, we're allowed to read.
And comprehend them, not to go out.
Do we get one of those?
The intent is to better understand arguments of counsel when they come forward. Thank you. Is that yours, John? We don't, no, we don't need to be on the record. We can be off.
Well.
Uh, we're not going to adjourn. We're going to recess.
Right.
Well, we haven't done that yet. We are, not yet. We have not officially recessed yet.
You're right. I thought we had, but.
No, just waiting. Can we do that now?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to recess this meeting tonight?
Do. Take the specific date.
Till February 9th.
Until February 9th?
Yes.
At 5:00 PM here, second?
Yes.
Vote, so approved, approved. I think that's everyone.
Who handed you that? Is that different than?
Only, Brian?
Yes.
Are there only two, not three, does town not give?
Okay.
John, I'm sorry, you handed this to me.